Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on June 17th, 2021 at 6:56 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via electronic means consistent with the Texas Open Meetings Act and the Governor's Disaster Proclamations related to COVID-19 through proclamations, executive orders, and suspensions of Texas law. At least a quorum of the board will be participating in person by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provisions of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on June 17th, 2021, beginning at 6:57 PM already convened in closed session. So, I will continue. At this time, we are reconvening in open session. This meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, June 17th, beginning at 6:57 PM. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Will Banks in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to anyone around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, next on our agenda, we will consider administrative appointments. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Mays. And tonight, I bring for your consideration the ratification of the Assistant Principal at Martin High School is discussed in closed session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative ratification as discussion is executive session? Mr. Will Banks?
I move the first vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Sarah McMurm. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Just want to confirm. There you go. Thank you. So, all present have voted in the affirmative, and the motion passes.
Thank you, President Mays. The new Assistant Principal for Martin High School is Dr. Gregory Cartwright. Dr. Cartwright attended Texas Wesleyan University for Bachelor of Business Administration, Texas Wesleyan for Master in Management, and then the University of Texas at Arlington for his Doctorate in Public and Urban Administration. Most recently, he has been an Educational Technology Specialist in Fort Worth ISD, but has taught career tech at Lamar High School since 2011 to 2019 here in Arlington ISD. So, congratulations to Dr. Cartwright.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary, LBENJAMI, at AISD.net no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am. We have no registered speakers this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Benjamin. Then we will continue on our agenda. Next is our discussion action item. Item A, Consider 2021/2022 Preliminary Budget. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Mays. And so this evening, we continue our budget discussion. And so, as we have progressed through these months, we have been analyzing and providing different inputs to the budget process. And I thanked last week the Finance Division, and I'll thank them again. But I also thank our principals and all their division heads and others who have been diligent in working on the development of this budget. And so tonight, you, the board asked us last time to add some things to the budget, so you'll see that. There are some revisions from that respect. And then there are some review slides that we have as well. This is, again, an opportunity for the board to provide direction and guidance as to what ultimately will be up for adoption on Tuesday, the 22nd, when we have our next board meeting. And so, Ms. Moss has been working through this and has been preparing this budget update, so I thank you, Ms. Moss, for that. Last point I'll make is that the board has received what I would call an abundance of information during this budget process, and so I thank you. This time of year is always challenging from that respect. But you've received an abundance of information and different ways to look at things, including compensation and subs and pay rates and things like that. So I just thank you ahead of time for your diligence in reviewing that information. And I know you'll have inputs with that tonight. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Moss to lead us through this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. President Mays, trustees, again, Dr. Kavasos is right. We've been working on this for some time now. The process actually started at the end of last year. We tried to start in November and working on our next year's budget. Then we bring in the campuses and different departments in January. So we've been doing this work for a while. We've come to you with different information, and hopefully tonight, we can be brief. We're required by law to propose a budget by June 19th and have it adopted by June the 30th. We're on track for that. As Dr. Kavasos stated, on the 22nd, we will be adopting the budget and having our public hearing. So we will be brief tonight, but we'll give you the opportunity for your feedback to see what we've done and what we proposed, what we've added into the budget for your consideration. Again, I have my team members here, and I would be remiss to not thank them again. They're the heavy lifters. We have our Executive Director of Financial Services and our Budget Director here tonight with us, and I appreciate all that they've done. We've made lots of changes. We've done different scenarios, and each time, it is a heavy lift for them to do that process. We're working on streamlining some of those processes, but we'll be brief tonight. There we go. You've seen this slide before. This is our budget timeline, just to keep you up to date with where we are. On June the 11th, a notice was posted for the public hearing that is scheduled for the 22nd. And tonight, we're just updating you on what we're proposing, as I said earlier. On June the 22nd also, we'll be adopting that budget or asking the board to adopt that budget so that we're in compliance with all laws. Again, this is just a repeat for you. It's the budget assumptions. It tells you what we've done to calculate the budget. They are included in the proposed budget that you will see tonight. We'll note that the MCR, of course, will not be final until August. We've communicated that with you as well as to the why. We're July 1, June 30 district, so we won't have that information. What is included in the budget, I will highlight, is the maintenance and operations tax rate of 1.0565. Again, we posted that, the current rate in the paper on the 11th, but we have budgeted at this rate. So this slide, you've seen part of this slide last week. That first column there just shows you, or depicts what we shared with the board on June the 10th in the preliminary budget. So you should be familiar with that bottom line of 10.1 million. And the column next to it, highlighted in yellow, is what we've adjusted to include what the board asked us to include in the budget. That's the stipend, the TASB stipend adjustments, the new positions, an increase in the substitute rate. The other difference that you will see there is our team recalculated the revenue template. There was a new revenue template that came out earlier this month, so we recalculated that, and we saw a little increase in the revenue on that. So all of that is included in what we're presenting to you tonight. And so, this slide as well, the only change here, we've shared this with the board on several occasions, the only change tonight is under Priority A, we added the health insurance increase. And at this time, I'm going to pause for any discussion or, Dr. Kavasos?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moss. And so, again, the brevity to get to this point seems brief, but it has been a heavy lift, and so I sincerely appreciate that. So as the board can tell on that slide, we have kept these priorities front and center. And these priorities have been something that we have worked on throughout the entire year. We know the type of year we've had with COVID and things like that, and so no need to reemphasize all that, but just know that it has been challenging, and that's why we set these priorities with the board of our budget. And so at this time, we certainly welcome input related to those priorities that have not been included in the budget yet and that we will include upon board discussion for Tuesday.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kavasos. Dr. Reich, you press your button one more time. Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, so I wanted to go through a couple of things. You didn't touch it. As soon as I said that, the light went out, like, no, we don't want to hear from you tonight. So, there's been a lot of work that has gone into what has led us to this point now. And Ms. Moss, to you and your department, you guys have knocked it out of the park. Keeping these budget priorities is essential. These are issues that have come to light. Sometimes they're recurring themes year in and year out. I think there's also some considerations due to this incredible year that we've had as a pandemic year. We've seen a lot of information, both in committee and just through communications. And I'd like to go through some of these things. You know, we did ask to have those equity adjustments, the stipend adjustments, the new positions, the subpay included, which I saw is reflected. I'd like to just put some thoughts out there for the board's consideration now to be considered to put into the proposed budget moving forward. I'll start off with the, I guess I'll start off with the percentage increase for salary for the raise. We've seen scenarios, and you've said that it's about 4 million, 4.2 million per percent. We, as a board, made a conscious decision last budget cycle to employ a 4% raise. And we let out with that ahead of any other district. We made a commitment to our staff to offer something that is really unprecedented, was at the time. Given the data that we have been presented, there's been a, you know, every year, most districts seem to go back and forth between 2 and a 3.5%. And we asked the voters, which they did agree, to have a voter-approved tax ratification election. And we did that with the intent of remaining and excelling and being competitive in compensation. It was a really nice thing to be able to say and guarantee to every teacher, as an example, last year, that there's going to be, every teacher's going to be receiving at least $2,400 of an increase. It's my opinion that I'd like to be able to say that again, which means we would be at a 4% again this year, based on the data that has been supplied from TASB. That would keep us very competitive, bump us up even a few notches in the different year bands of service. So that's one thing that I'd like to put out there as a consideration, is that we go bold. This is a bold board. It always has been, that we look at 4% versus any other percentage. The reality is, these will cause swings in your previous slide. It will bring us maybe into the negative, maybe just a lower net positive. I fully believe that after we get, even without S or with the valuations and perhaps an enrollment increase, which we don't know, we're going to be okay. And being fiscally prudent has always been number one on my mind. And it was very painful in the past year or so to have to approve deficit budgets that I knew weren't going to swing. And I really feel confident that we're okay this year, that it's going to come back positive. So I would say 4% would be my recommendation for consideration. The equity adjustments, the stipend adjustments, the new positions, you know, equity is something that we are looking at year in and year out. We've learned from previous times, and not really from mistakes, but just circumstance of the year, that we're not able to make adjustments. And all we have done is slip further and further down, and it causes more pain moving forward. And so I really applaud you, Dr. Kavasos, the whole team, in looking at that and making sure that we don't end up in that trap again, if we can at all avoid it. Stipend's the same thing, to make sure that we are market competitive, maintain that market competitive. I don't have any changes in those at this point, nor the new positions. The substitute rate increase, that's about a $700,000 or so add into the budget that's already baked in, that we asked last time. That is based off of median to move our numbers. And it would be, one of the things that has been of interest, I know not just of myself, is that what is the difference between that median and that max? Can we do more? Because coming off of this year, gosh, thank you to the subs that worked during this pandemic year. Oh, my gosh. What a year for anybody in this district and other districts. Our subs have done remarkable work. It's always a recurring theme, no matter how much we try to adjust, there's always noise, it seems to me, still. And yeah, but it's still not the same as other districts. And so, based on the information that Mr. Cale has provided in briefings, it would be good for us, my opinion, to lead in the market for subs across all areas. And I believe that's an additional 1.3 million to be on the top of the market. Maybe we can have some more discussion around that. But that's what I would recommend, is that we don't just shoot for what is a TASB recommendation to keep us, you know, middle of the road, maybe edged out a few, but let's lead. Let's lead in this district. Let's thank our subs and structure it so that we get the highest quality subs possible. That's what our students deserve, and that's what our teachers deserve that are entrusting all their babies with those subs. So, that would be another recommendation, to go to the top of the market there. And then on the health insurance, so we just started talking about it last week, and we'd actually been in discussions about it longer than that. We've got, $20 was a number that was proposed to keep us at a higher rate, if we look at comparisons to other districts, move us up a few notches. And I'm comfortable doing that, so I'd put that out there. I'm comfortable also, we've seen a number at $28 of an increase in contribution, and that moves us up just a little bit more, not significant, but I think what that does, if we consider that, is we don't know what other districts are going to do. This is always the, you know, the magic eight ball and crystal ball kind of thing that we all go through. And with rates likely overall increasing for all districts, there's a chance that there's going to be movement by other districts. And so, another number was $28 as a consideration. And I would lend my thoughts that, let's look at 28. Maybe there's even an additional thought on that per contribution, so that if other districts do move and that needle does move, we don't have, we at a minimum maintain where we are, and we don't slip. And so that'll give us a little bit of a cushion there. So that's, I think that's where I would see, in keeping with what we want to do as a board, in line with our strategic plan, recruit, retain, reward the best. Let's lead out there. Financially, yeah, it's always going to be a challenge, and if we forecast things out, there's certainly going to be some tough roads ahead. But this year, coming off of the pandemic year, I think it would be great if we can offer these types of things. So that's, those are my thoughts, and I'd open it up for everybody else.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Do we have any other trustees with comments and/or questions? Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. I do think the 4% is a good number. When I think back on teachers and my sister being a teacher in the district of the year, year and a half they have faced, I don't know, I don't know that I could have done it. I teach on the college level, but that's totally different than our teachers in the district. And to think that they were also doing face-to-face and virtual at the same time, I just can't even imagine that. I was just doing virtual, trying to keep up with that. So I think the more we can show them how much we appreciate everything that they've done, you know, thinking about last spring or of '20, those teachers were kind of thrown into that. And there was training, but they were trying to learn it on their own. They were trying to teach their students. They were trying to figure it all out, and most of them kind of had to do it on their own. And a lot of teachers were not that much into computers and trying to figure that out and master that and get all the material loaded. I just commend them so much for everything they've done for that year and a half. And I think the 4% would let them know how much we appreciate them. And I like the other things that we've talked about too, but I think they need to be rewarded for the year and a half that they have stuck it out, the progress that they have made, helping their students, contacting parents, and keeping up with all of that. I just can't imagine the strain that they've been under. So I hope that we can consider the 4%. If we could do more, I would vote for more, but 4% I think would be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Having looked at the numbers and the data that's been provided to us over the last several weeks, and we took a deep dive into some of the numbers in Finance Committee, and as Dr. Kavasos said earlier, we've had sort of a data dump. And I think, Ms. Moss, that the proposed budget, the numbers that you've put together, definitely make the case that a 4% raise is feasible. That is something that we did last year, which followed a very strong raise that we did in 2019 following HB3. We have, for several years now, been in a position to be able to follow through on commitments that we made to not only just maintain our competitiveness, but gain ground back, because we had taken a dip in our competitiveness vis a vis other districts there for a short while. And we have made, in the last budget, we made a lot of progress on that front, and I think a 4% raise would build on that progress, sustain the position that we have moved to, and keep us in the top ranks of districts in the DFW area when it comes to teacher and staff compensation. Very encouraged to hear that the 4% raise would again result in a minimum of a $2,400 raise for teachers across the board. And then, of course, with the equity adjustments, some folks will get a little bit more than that to maintain competitiveness in those, especially in those experienced years of teachers who have a lot of tenure with us and who have a lot of experience in the classroom. It's important that we keep the experienced educators around. They're a great value to us and our students. I'm very pleased with the stipend adjustments. We haven't looked at them, you know, in a lot of detail, but I can tell from the study that TASB did. It was a really comprehensive study, and we have looked at this before and made some minor adjustments. But this, I think, with the stipend adjustments goes a, adopting the TASB recommendations would go a very long way towards restoring the competitiveness of some of our stipends, especially with respect to some of our positions where we've just fallen out of competitiveness. And that's something that, you know, that we just have to do. On the substitute rate increase, I agree with Dr. Reich and Ms. Fowler that substitutes are so important to our district. It's an area where we have struggled. We looked at some data for fill rates across various campuses, and I know it was just a snapshot in time, and COVID threw a lot of that data off, but it does seem to be the case that for a large number of our campuses, we struggle to get more than 60% or 70% fill rate. And at the end of the day, you know, our job is to focus on students, and so when we can't fill classrooms with substitutes, the people who are going to suffer the most there are, of course, the students, but also our staff, who are going to be pulled in different directions to try to make ends meet for that day when we can't fill a position. So I totally agree with Dr. Reich in the sense that I don't think a modest adjustment along the line to meet market median is going to fix that problem. We have tried variable rates of compensation for substitutes depending on campuses before, and we made some progress with that, but it doesn't look like it came anywhere close to solving the problem. So I think, as Dr. Reich said, a bold move in that direction to get us towards the top, if not the top of the market, I would fully support that being included in the proposed budget. And I'd further say that, to the extent that we can distinguish among substitutes and create a tiered scale between non-degreed, degreed, and degreed-certified substitutes, I would be strongly in support of that with weighting, especially towards the degreed-certified substitutes, who, those are the individuals that we know, especially because a good chunk of them seem to be retired teachers or people who were formerly teachers, that those are probably going to be the best value for us to have in the classroom on a day-to-day basis. And also have it to where it's not just degreed-certified getting a boost in pay for the long-term assignments. I would be supportive of the degreed-certified teachers being able to get that increased pay rate even for daily assignments, because it's just not long-term substitutes who provide a value to our students. It's, you want someone in the classroom on a day-to-day basis, even if it's just for one day, who can give value to the students and not just go in there and sit and make sure they don't, you know, tear the classroom apart, as a former teacher myself. The health insurance increase, I would also support going beyond the previous $20 amount that we looked at. I believe the $28 covers the increase in premium, monthly premiums this year for the lowest cost or the lowest, the plan with the lowest increase. Would love to hear other trustees' thoughts on whether maybe another metric should be used beyond the 28, but I could definitely support doing at least the 28. And I know that you don't have the budget numbers screened up here, but I noticed that Priority E there, I know we can't bank on this, the stabilization due to enrollment loss, but I do want to say, Ms. Moss, that you have, we have a tradition here of looking at very conservative budget projections. Sometimes, as has been said, that results in us adopting a budget that looks like we're going to have a deficit, but almost invariably, we end up with a surplus, because we are very good at managing our, not only our spending, but we're, we try to project forward conservatively, expecting things to maybe not be as rosy as we would like them to be. So I know from looking at the numbers we've been provided, that we've been provided, it seems like we could do all of those things. seems like we could do all of those things and at worst adopt a modest, very modest budget deficit, but that stabilization due to enrollment loss, two things on that. My understanding is that the budget projections we've looked at have been built on the assumption that we are going to not only not recover any students that were lost during COVID, we would actually have a very small, a few hundred student decrease. And so for every student that we do get back, any deficit number that shows in this preliminary projection is going to be reduced. And I, you know, I like to be hopeful in looking at the pockets of students that it seems like we quote-unquote "lost" this year. They tended to be pre-K and kindergarten students who probably the parents kept them home for most of the year, and I would expect most of those students to come back. So I'm very hopeful that this is sort of a, you know, I would say worst-case scenario budget. And even if that doesn't pan out, I think it's a very good decision if we, and I understand we've applied for it, but we don't have formal approval yet, which is maybe why it's not going to be included in the budget chart that's going to be shown. But to use some of the ESAR funds to stabilize our budget while we account for changes in enrollment, because last year was such a change, we need time to adjust to any permanent enrollment loss, and that allows us to do that, and that would also, from my understanding, result in the budget being in a surplus situation when we account for those stabilization funds, even if it looks like there's a small deficit that would adopt from this. So all of which is to say, I think this is a year where we have, because of smart decisions that we've made in the past, the ability to make a bold statement on compensation and staff support, and I think this is the right time to do it. We did run, to put a TRE on the ballot in the fall, it was built around the idea of paying our teachers, put out quite a few of those signs ourselves, and we made that commitment, and this is us, I think the budget incorporating the things that we have discussed so far, if my colleagues agree, would go to a long way towards fulfilling that commitment. And those are my thoughts at this time. Look forward to hearing other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mrs. McMura.
Okay, so last time we talked about the possibility of a substitute rate increase, which was good, but considering a substitute rate increase to where it would be top of the market is great. Realistically, we share subs with neighboring districts. I know a lot of, I mean, I myself, as a teacher, you know, would have a substitute who would have to choose, you know, pick up a job in this district, or should I do AISD today? So I think that's key. It's not just what they deserve, but it will also help us address problems, you know, with retaining subs and not having, hopefully not having them drop those jobs last minute. So I think that that's huge. I'm in, I'm in great support of that. I'm particularly hopeful that we can incentivize this to attract our degreed-certified substitutes. It was said earlier that this is the caliber of person that we want in charge if the classroom teacher can't be there, and I'm really hopeful that we can pursue particularly incentivizing sub jobs for them. I'm really hopeful, moving on to the health insurance increase, that we could contribute twenty-eight dollars a month rather than twenty. Every little bit counts, and this is a step in the right direction, and we definitely need to address it. And most importantly, I wholeheartedly agree with a four percent raise. And there's so much to consider when thinking about budgets, there's so many moving parts, but it's not just about staying competitive with neighboring districts. It's about our people. It's about our teachers and staff and what they've endured, as Ms. Fowler said, this past year. And not only were our teachers, you know, teaching virtual and in person at the same time, making hybrid look easy, but they, they were putting their health on the line. And, you know, that's, that's their level of dedication. They are doing all of this for our kids. And so I say if we can do four percent, we must do four percent. Let's do it. The most important thing going on in our district every day is what's going on in those classrooms. So I'm really pleased to hear this, and I hope that we can do four percent.
Thank you, Ms. McMura. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Mays, and I agree with my colleagues. We passed a TRE and with the promise, as my colleague Justin Chapa pointed out, that it would go to pay the teachers. And I know we gave a four percent, which was a raise last year, which was out of the ordinary, but there were circumstances that required that to make us competitive, which we as a board have been consistent in our messaging on, that we need to pay, be competitive on our salaries. The most important resource in terms of moving the needle in terms of student outcomes is the quality of teacher in that classroom. And the fact remains, we're in a very competitive market for those, that very tight resource. If you would have asked me if we would have the luxury a year ago to give another four percent raise, I would have thought you were crazy. But the way the cards felt, fell from our budget and looking at the surpluses added with the TRE and the fact, now that we've had a chance to see what that effect, I agree with my colleagues. I think a number of districts around us have given retention bonuses and hardship bonuses, because this was an extremely tough year for teachers. As Ms. Fowler pointed out, they were kind of flying the plane as they were building it. And not only that, it was a huge amount of time. I had teachers tell me they got up at six, put together their plans, and they were staying up doing videos or doing outreach to students well past midnight. So they were operating on a lot of limited sleep. They went way above and beyond. And for right or wrong, you know, it's not been our culture here to give bonuses when we feel that a one-time bonus is just that one time, when we could have the opportunity to build that into a raise instead, which would help go towards the pension. I come from a culture that's a little bit different and views those as two separate things, but I get it. And since we do have the opportunity in lieu of maybe some of the bonuses, and we can afford it, then definitely four percent. So I'm all for the four percent. You know, the other issues is when you look at where we are in a very good position financially right now, stipends is something we've kicked that can down the road a long time, and we've fallen out of being market competitive there. I think, I think, want to thank Tasby for coming in, kind of analyzing that. They made a lot of great suggestions, and I think the proposal from the finance team to bring those back in line, sometimes go above market, is totally called for now. Any year, it has to be this year. And the same thing with substitute pay. Our fill rate, you know, my colleagues have already talked about that at length, and again, we have that, the issue there is not just competing with substitutes and other educational resources. We're really competing with a broad labor market in the area, and if you've driven down Cooper Street or anywhere, there's help wanted, no one can fill those jobs. So what's that causing? It's causing that minimum wage and those hourly rates to go up, to where we're now looking at fifteen dollars is the effective minimum wage in the, in the area. So I know substitutes are paid on a day rate, but essentially, you know, when someone could, instead of substitute teaching, could go and get a teller job somewhere and make more money, that's going to have a deleterious effect on our ability to recruit substitute teachers. And I would even posit, not now, but it's something I would want us to do in our Finance Committee, is take a deeper dive and look at all of our hourly pay rates and where they are competitive, given this new reality of the labor market, especially for hourly employees. So I'd like that to be in action. I mean, I don't think that's something I would want you necessarily to come back, because unlike contracted employees, that's something we can look at at any time, and when there's a need, come back and fill it. And that's something I'd like to take a deep dive and really look to see, you know, gauge just how big the gap is and what the need is there, if any. But something I feel is important, we do need to look at. But in terms of our substitute pay, I think the proposal set forth, putting us top of market, I mean, is absolutely, I mean, if we're going to have any prayer, given where the trends are in the labor market, we have to take a bold action, and this is a bold action, I think, that's going to help prevent problems later on. And also given the fact that the theme going forward is recovery, and what we don't want is stress on that tier-one instruction in the classroom, because teachers are having to cover two classrooms and are stressed because we're not filling the right. It's imperative that we have all hands on deck for the learning loss recovery that needs to happen. So kudos to the team and Mr. Kell and your group for coming in and putting a bold proposal in front of us, and I think that's something that absolutely has to happen. And with that, I think, you know, I've covered, I think we've covered everything, the stipends, substitute pay, healthcare. I think in finance, what was the information that we were given was that the, the minimum cost increase, the lowest cost increase for one of our healthcare plans was twenty-eight dollars, so that's, we looked at twenty in our proposal for twenty-eight, but, you know, I think the reality, I'll defer to my colleague, Mr. Hogg, who, you know, I think we all come, we all have our superpowers to one of us on this board, and that is definitely Mr. Hogg's superpower. So I'm going to end by turning it over to him, and, and I'll defer to him on his opinion, but I think since most employees are in the plan where that a thirty-one dollar increase occurred on, that that's what we should be looking at possibly, so I'd like to see what that looks at. And I'd be curious what my colleague, Mr. Hogg, thinks on that, and with that, I'll turn over the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Unfortunately, Mr. Hogg would like to speak. Mr. Hogg?
I'm just glad I found out my superpower. I'll take it. First off, Ms. Moss and team, I know this was y'all's first full budget as an organization, as a group together with change in our Finance Department, and I appreciate it. I think y'all run a really tight budget cycle. Haven't heard a lot of complaining from all the departments, so that's a good thing, right? We're going, and I think it's, it's pretty nice when a board can sit up here and talk about some of these extras and things we have to do to be able to help our employees. So I appreciate y'all's hard work on this, because, listen, y'all are a new team, working all together and getting through it, and it's, you know, we talk about budget all the time. It just seems like we talk about it these couple of weeks. The budget's a living, breathing document. It's something that's constantly going. We have budget changes, we have budget amendments, and we have to work through a budget the entire year. You guys are putting together predictive budgets the entire year from where we're going, so I really appreciate y'all's work. I also appreciate my colleagues, and y'all hear me talk about it all the time, of total compensation. Sometimes you get pigeonholed in one piece of compensation, and we have some surrounding districts that focus just on salary. Good strategy, it's fine, it's their strategy, you know? They add more kids to the classroom, they keep their health insurance costs low, they do some other things, and they, that's their strategy, and that's, that's okay, that's their good strategy. I appreciate this board and this district looking at total compensation from where we're going, and you've heard my colleagues, and I won't reiterate a lot of it, but the talk of total compensation. I'll be honest, I came in planning, couple, you know, start a budget cycle with this, thinking three and a half percent is where we're going to go, but as we looked at numbers, the four percent makes sense, just plain and simple from where it comes. And Mr. Chapa, you said it, and some others, you know, we had to get there because this is about student outcomes, and the really true way to change student outcomes is our teachers in the classrooms. And we have to focus on student outcomes, and to focus on student outcomes, it's what are we doing on our campuses every single day? And while central office, maintenance, they may not be on that campus every day, they're affecting that campus every single day across the board. And so I think as we look at total compensation, I think the four percent is a total thing. On the same note, we have to be cautious of our spend. We've had enrollment drops, we've had declines. Do I think we'll have some enrollment increase? Yes. Do we have a good way of adjusting that? And do we build that? Yes. I would also ask, you know, as, as we start moving forward of the fund balance, what are we allocating that fund balance for? You know, and listen, there's always flex on the allocation, but we do need to have very guided plans in our fund balance from where we're going. As we expand our pre-K, what's our three-year funding mechanism in that? What is our funding mechanism in that fund balance? Is it ten percent, fifteen percent to adjust for enrollment discrepancies, which we have a flexible enrollment right now? It's, it's hard, it's probably the hardest we've ever had to predict enrollment, just being fully honest. You know, luckily, we have a fund balance, because no one would have predicted what we had with the pandemic coming up. And so I think as we allocate some of those things to assure that we're making a commitment investment in pre-K, and that it doesn't come back and say, well, now we can't follow through three years from now, that's where we need to allocate. And so I just say, as we move forward in the budget, I think that's a plan to show, here's where we're looking to project on this fund balance, and show some of these things in the fund balance to get to that. I can't remember which colleagues, y'all all said good things. Mr. Kell, in our subway, we have to do it, especially, I appreciate the look on our certified, degreed, and that's kind of going into teachers that are either staying home with their kids, and they want to sub a couple of days a week, or retired teachers that are coming, they're coming back and saying, okay, I'll go, I'll go help my friends out, the teachers that I know. It's important, because each day you don't have a highly qualified sub. We talk about highly qualified teachers. Each day you don't have a highly qualified sub, that's a lost day of learning for that young man or woman. And we've all been in classrooms, either as an educator or student, where you're like, oh, look at the sub we got today, this is total chaos in this classroom. And so there's a trait that a certified teacher has, so I think the more we can do that, the better. Mr. Kell, I also ask us, as we increase this subpay, and we talk about being flexible, we have to be flexible on what this pay is. And if we need to make budget adjustments coming in the future, we need to make those adjustments, because I, my colleagues know, I hate choosing just arbitrary numbers, right? Like, pick a number out of the pie of the sky, and that's what we're going to go with. And there's a little bit of, I feel like we've done that. I think we justified it by saying we're going to be at the top of the market, and so that's how we've chosen that number. But, Mr. Kell, I want us to really track how we're increasing fill rate, but also increasing with certified degree teachers, is what we need to be tracking on. If we're at the top of the market, we better be top of the market on certified degree teachers in there, because, because otherwise, it's not doing what we hope it does. If our fill rate hasn't gone from, you know, I think we average ninety, in the nineties, somewhere across the board, if we're not increasing a couple of points, then we need to adjust that. If the Friday incentive pay is not helping us get to where we need to be on our Friday rates, which Fridays can drop at the high schools to seventy percent or so, then we need to adjust that. We have to make those adjustments, because you hear the stories of other teachers having to cover classrooms, APs covering classrooms all day from those things. So I just, I'm glad we're doing it, because I think it gets a lot of our certified-degree teachers that would sub, and now maybe it's an extra incentive to get them to come in, because a lot of them don't want to sub every day. They're like, I'll serve a couple of days a week, but I don't want to go home back every day. There's a reason I retired. I get it, I get it, like, I fully get it, but if I can get you to come in for a day or two, I know how valuable you are to that classroom. Y'all mentioned the stipends, which I fully agree with, and equity adjustment. Listen, we, we got behind, like, just plain and simple from where it is, so all these things come up. And then we get into health insurance, which y'all know, y'all have probably heard me, everyone's tired of hearing me talk about that, but it's a big deal. It's especially a big deal to those that have no other option, right? And if we don't do the right things on that, we're almost penalizing a group. And they can say, well, we're putting this out. Well, also, there's insurance advantages to having, it go to your insurance on that side. There's also, you're penalizing people that sometimes don't have another option of where they want to go and what they want to do. So, Mr. Kell, let me ask a question. Which to do. So, Mr. Kell, let me ask a question. Which plan, is it active care primary, active care HD, or active care primary plus, that we have the most participants in? And I'm saying across employee only, employee spouse, employee children, employee family. I think it's, is it HD or primary?
It's active care HD with about 50.1%, Mr. Hogg.
So 15.1%?
50.1.
50. So over 50% of our employees. And that is our, that's, it's funny, that's actually not our lowest premium from where it is. And this is second lowest premium. So if you look at what's our lowest premium, which is, you have to assume employee only, and our lowest premium's active care primary, and that premium's gone from 386 to 417, which is a $31 increase. Mr. Kell, we both work in this industry. A lot of times, people choose that lowest premium, because that's all they can afford, correct?
Right.
That's what happens.
Yes, sir.
It's just a reality from where it is. If you look at active care HD, not only do they have an increase where 50% of our employees, you also have employees, there's a 200, the deductible rose by $200 for individuals and $400 for families. Then you start looking at the numbers. The co-insurance rate rose from 20 to 30% that they have to cover. The out-of-network went from 40 to 50, and the out-of-pocket max went up. I would sit there and say they're trying to push people out of the HD plan, is what TRS is looking at. Would you agree that's probably the right attitude?
There's probably a sway toward the primary plus plan, which is a managed care plan.
Which is, which is a managed care. I fully agree with that. But if I look at that, and listen, I can't believe I'm spending this much time talking about $3 on this. But I would look at my colleagues and say, I think we go 50% of our employees are in active care primary. We increase this by $31 is the number I think I would, unless my colleagues disagree, go with it. And I've spent too long talking about $3, right? But it gets there. But I think it also gets us to, Mr. Kell, of over 50%. And listen, we're not even talking about, and I think we've got to take a look, you know, the group I worry about the most is those that have their employee and families on the plan. Because those plans have gone up, if you count them across the board, $104, $107, and $87. Well, that doesn't sound that bad, until you look at the number, and it's like, oh, hey, you're on, 50% of our people are on active care primary. If you have your family on there, it's $1,400. That's, that's, I would consider that, I'm not asking you for that exact number right now, but I bet you it's pretty low on how many we have enrolled. Why? Because it's unlivable wages. That's what it is. There, it's not, and part of this is state, state only contributes $75, requires us to contribute, what, $150 on that minimum. And so I think we've got to take a deeper look. And I say it, like, okay, I know I can't cover that 104 adjustment on there. But I think we go with active care primary. The $31 is the employee only, which is not terrible insurance. It's okay. And Blue Cross, they've done a good job, our TRS active care folks, with through all your work, Mr. Kell, and advocacy. And if we all remember, we fought pretty hard to be able to look and get out there, and started that relationship off pretty, pretty aggressive, I think we could say, and say, we're looking for some change. And they've made some change. So I appreciate Katrina and the TRS active care team for what they've done. So I would propose a 31, but I would also propose, and Mr. Kell, as the legislature came through, and we hear from our friend in the back, our friends in the back who talk about legislative changes, that we have the option to potentially bid out. I would look at this board and our staff and say, I hope we take full advantage and take the full analysis to look at potentially bidding out. And it may not be the right option. It may not be the best plan for us to leave. But if we don't take a full advantage and take that look, I think we're missing a huge opportunity for us to get there. And by us having another bump in this insurance, it also makes that if we do make the change, it may be a little less of a bite for us to make that change and come back with an adjustment for the next year from what we're trying to do. So unless my colleagues disagree, I would ask staff to put it, and I think I heard everyone say 28. I don't think anyone's going to fight another bump on where we're going to get to that. But other than that, there's my superpower, Mr. Will Banks. You know, listen, I'll talk about insurance till the day I'm done up here, because I hear the stories from our security guards, and I ask them, and I say, you don't have to tell me if you don't want to. Do you have your family on the plan? They're like, no. I go, your kid's uninsured? They go, yeah. And that's the reality. So, and, Mr. Kell, you've worked so hard. And I don't think the staff in this district knows how much you fight for them on these type of things. And so I truly appreciate your work, but I think there's more to be done.
Yeah, I agree.
And there's a lot more to be done. We have to be cautious over our budget, but we also have to be cautious, because our strategy is not just to dump it all on the salary. Our strategy, and I think I've heard everyone up here, is total compensation, is what we're going through. So let's, let's look at all the different pieces. And the reality is 60% are still on our insurance. So I, I'm glad we're pushing towards that. And my colleagues agree with that. And I'll leave it at that. And then, Ms. Mason, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hogg. Thank you, Mr. Kell. I guess I will finalize this by saying, appreciate the discussion that we've had here with our colleagues. Bowie completely agree. There's no numbers pulled out of a hat, because as you've stated, this is something that's been worked on since November. This is something that continues to manifest until we vote. I mean, till the very last minute. I am very proud that we've set priorities, and priorities that reflect things that are important to our staff here in the district. Ms. Moss, thank you so much for you and your staff. Thank you for accepting input. Thank you for answering our questions. And from what I've heard from all of my colleagues up here, is that the main thing that we're really focused on is, one, that our students succeed, and understanding what's going to help them succeed. And when we have an opportunity, and honestly, I will say, pre-COVID, COVID, now post-COVID, teachers and staff have always deserved more, because they work hard every year. Yes, we had an odd year where things were having to be done even more than normal. But everybody, our staff works hard every single day, and all of that impacts the success of our students. So once again, thank you very much. Thank you for this discussion to my colleagues up here. And June 22, I don't know if y'all are marking days off your calendar, but it's coming very soon.
They are.
So thank you very much to you and to your team, and to everyone else who is working in the background, to make sure that we get this budget, as we try every year, as right as possible, to reflect our goals, our strategic planning of having successful students, and a happy staff of 8,000 employees to the best that we can do. So thank you once again. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And thanks for all the comments. Dr. Cavassos, did you?
Thank you, President Mason. Thank you, Ms. Moss. So we'll go for a couple more slides. We know we are going to make those adjustments as the board has, has, had their input. But this next slide shows the proposed, and we'll go through that with the adjustments coming back on the 22nd that you all talked about. And we'll show the other budgets, too. So keep going, Ms. Moss.
Okay. And so before, I just want to make a couple of comments before I go forward, just based on the conversation from the board. One comment is, I think we're headed in the right direction. And I'm looking back to make sure my team is still here. We're going to have to make some more adjustments, and that's going to take some time for them to do that. But we'll get the budget proposed and adopted on the 22nd. The second thing is, I did want to bring up that, you know, we're looking at the impact, you know, of the teachers, of the pandemic on our teachers over this past year. We've also had an impact on our taxpayers as well. So I just want to take an opportunity to bring up the fact that we are looking at decreasing that tax rate by 3 cents, and our budget reflects that as well. The third point is, I think it was Mr. Chapa who mentioned that we've been conservative in the past. We haven't left that. We are still conservative in how we budget. We have some opportunities here. The team and I have identified, we know the work that we need to do. We have the ESER $2, and we'll talk about that on this next slide. But we're not depending on just the, just the ESER $2. We're going to use those for our benefit over the next three years. But we're going to plan the general operating budget and forecast out, so that we know where we should be as far as staffing and position management, that type thing. So just wanted to assure you of that. Okay, so this slide is what we had proposed with the items on the right there included. So 10.8 million is the deficit, based on those new calculations and what we added from the board. It includes a 4% midpoint increase, the TASB adjustments that you spoke of, TASB stipend adjustments, the new positions, substitute rate, and health insurance. So that's, those last two items, I think you're asking for us to do a little bit more than what we calculated in this amount. My quick estimate is that's going to be possibly 1.5 to $2 million. So if we'll say we'll round it to $2 million, that number would then be a deficit of 12 million. So I'll go to the next slide and show you all of our budgets. So again, general operating, that 10.8 would then be 12 million. I want to add that, again, the ESER dollars that we use to stabilize our enrollment would go towards that. Now, when you adopt the budget, it's going, going to be a deficit amount of about 12 million or so. And please don't quote me on that. We've got to do the calculations and the math, so it may be different. But that's what we will propose for you to adopt on Tuesday. It will be somewhere in that neighborhood with the new, new items that you've added. We had a small adjustment to the food service budget. I think when we shared it out last week, it was at about a 400 million deficit. We've done some calculations, added the 4% in there, and that is now a $167,000 deficit. And just a small change to the construction fund. The others are the same as it was when we proposed them last week. Any other questions?
I think we got all of our questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Once again, thank you. Okay, that is business at hand. So our next discussion-action item, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mason. Tonight, we bring one more update on ESER planning and funding. And so tonight, this is also a discussion-action item. It provides a little bit more detail as we refine the plan of what these items would be for ESER funding. So at this time, I'll ask Dr. Wertz to lead us through that presentation.
All right. Good evening, President Mason, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, I'm here this evening to share with you an update on our plans for ESER III, and to share with you a little bit about where we intend to place some of the funding in terms of buckets of where those funds will go. I thought I would just start off by orienting everyone to the $2 amounts that we're receiving in, in ESER. I'll address ESER II a little bit at the end of the presentation. But ESER II is primarily designated to assist with stabilization of enrollment. And that is a little bit close to 60 million, $59.9 million. $45 million will be attached towards that stabilization. And then ESER III is a little over $134 million. And this money is designated primarily to work on gap closure. There are, I know you've seen these slides multiple times, and I only keep including them again and again, is because I know that we have different audience members that tend to watch the, the different meetings. So I'll kind of go through these quickly. But in essence, we have specific requirements surrounding the, the use of ESER III funding. And there is one specific requirement that states that 20% of the monies must be designated to work on, use towards evidence-based interventions to help with gap closure, and specifically towards programs that serve students who are part of the Title I Part A, homeless, or youth in foster care. And this money can be used in programs that take place during the school day. It can also be part of extended school year or extended day. There are four main areas that I've talked about the last few meetings specifically that we're trying to address in terms of use of ESER funds. I've, I've spoken about gap closure, of course, and then working towards helping to provide resources for students and families who are struggling with social and emotional well-being, and doing that in an equitable way to make sure that our students have equal access to resources, so they can all come to an equal playing field in terms of getting their needs met. We've tried to do all this with this concept around of sustainability in mind, meaning we are very aware that this is an infusion of funding, and that it will have a termination or an end date. And so we want to use the money to really build capacity in the system to serve our students and our families, knowing that there will be a time when that funding will no longer be available. There are six primary guiding principles that we've thought about as we've kind of approached our work in terms of planning for the use of the money to address these four areas. When it comes to gap closure, really trying to focus on the rigor of instruction, and make sure that we focus on the depth and not necessarily the pace. So we want to make sure that we give teachers and staff the flexibility to meet students' needs based upon where they are, focus on current grade level content standards, while filling gaps that might have been generated from prior, this prior year. We also want to prioritize which portions of the curriculum or standards specifically really need to be elevated, that have what I call are considered big rocks, things that students really must know and understand and master in order to be successful in the, in the next course. So we want to elevate those in the curriculum for staff. And we want to make sure that we're addressing all of our learners, and not focusing primarily on just the results of a single standardized test. We've talked a lot about that over the years in terms of STAR. There's valuable information in the STAR, but it is one test given on one day, and it doesn't necessarily articulate the full needs of a student. And then finally, in Arlington, with our learner framework, we're focused on relevant learning, making sure that students have access to learning that has some meaning to their personal life. And while the pandemic was not necessarily positive, it is a common experience that we've all had together. And there are things you can leverage in that experience to learn. And so we intend to do that. When it comes to sustainability, we really focus our efforts around these six primary questions. One, does the investment that we're thinking about actually address not only short-term but long-term needs? And does it, is it aligned to the strategic plan and the goals and vision that you, as a board, have set? What, what, how do, how do we make sure that the way that we implement our strategies, we do it in a way that's not only effective, but that it's equitable across the system, and that we have some sense that those, and evidence that those strategies will in fact be successful if implemented with fidelity? And then finally, how do we leverage these things to build on things we've already started? So what we didn't want to do in our plan is just take a sharp right turn and wipe everything out and start all over with with staff. We do believe that we are focused on research-based practices to begin with, and we want to leverage the money to accelerate that process with our staff and measure our success along the way. So these are the primary targets that we will be leveraging over the course of the next three to five years to really track our progress. I call them, I call them, what do we call that when we go to the doctor's office? I said that earlier today.
Vitals.
Our vitals, yes. Thank you. I'm having a moment. Our vital signs. I, I call them our vitals, because as a doctor checks your vitals to make sure that you are basically healthy. If there's something wrong with one of your vital signs, they tend to go a little deeper. These are serving as our vitals over the next several years, so we can check to make sure students are not only on track to graduate high school, but that they're actually college and career ready, and, and, and ready to go into a post-secondary education environment should they choose to do so. There are several categories that we have been thinking about in our planning process. And so I wanted to highlight these. The major overarching big three categories that ESER funds are used primarily for really fall into three major buckets. One is the safe reopening of schools. One is to enhance services that are already in the system. And another is to address needs that were in existence prior to the COVID-19 crisis. Within those three buckets, we prioritize or stratified our work into the three categories that are part of the current strategic plan or areas of focus within the system, which are the learner experience, the leadership development work that we've been doing, and our process around equity. And then to narrow that even further, there are specific buckets to which these, these funding sources will be allocated. And I will share our proposed amount for each of these tonight. One is around instructional support. One's around extended day and summer programming, mental health, behavioral support, professional learning, technology, and then our infrastructure. And by infrastructure, we're not only talking about buildings, but also around core staffing that needs to happen in order to make those things function. As required, we have solicited feedback from our stakeholders to help inform ourselves about not only what we believe our data is telling us we need to set, spend some areas of focus, but what do our constituents also believe is important. There are specific groups of people that we're required to solicit feedback from. And so anybody who is a student that, anybody who works with a student or has a student who falls in any one of these categories, we're, we are asked to solicit their feedback. And we have received feedback from family members and community members, and/or teachers or students from each of these groups. We also solicit feedback within our system. We solicited from across departmental teams, across the district, principals, teachers. We presented to the Financial Futures Committee and got feedback from that group, which consists of not only staff members, but also community and parents. We did a stakeholder survey among parents, communities, staff, and students, and had over 4,300 respondents. And we also presented the Chamber of Commerce and collected feedback from them actually this afternoon. And those will be unfolded. And those will be unfolded into our analysis. This is a draft of our current proposed budget in terms of buckets. I want to emphasize that this is draft, and it functions very much like a district improvement plan. Those dollar amounts may shift and change over time as we assess our process and decide that some strategies we may want to do, some may have to actually be discontinued. But this is where we're kind of starting. Each one of these things are, these bucket amounts are aligned to those strategies or those areas that you'll notice in the smallest circle on the left-hand side. So without going through each number individually, you can see the range. It doesn't go in any specific order. But instructional support, a little over $33 million for extended day or summer program, about $26 million. There's a little over $12 million for mental health and behavioral support, and then it works its way down into infrastructure. What I would like to do now is just kind of go through each one of those to give you just a general sense about what some of the strategies are that are the focus areas within those buckets are and where that money might be allotted. The other important point to note is that whilst there may be some staff that maybe need to be hired to accomplish some of these goals, the funding attached to those staff member positions are embedded in these dollars. So the first one is instructional support. Primarily, the instructional support strategies focus around a couple of things, and these are intended to give you just a general idea. One is extending, providing additional funding to allow for additional PLC time at the elementary level. We don't really have that at elementary. It's very difficult because of the time constraints connected to all of the standards that have to be taught. Whereas in secondary, it's built into a block schedule. Funding is being set aside to make that possible for PLCs. Also, money is set aside for prioritizing standards with the curriculum, purchasing and building up more curricular resources and lesson exemplars within our system on Curriculum Central. Really adding more resources to our libraries to increase circulation. We have some inequities across our system within libraries. And so we are going to be getting, we're trying to bring ourselves up to what the state calls a proficient rate in terms of the number of dollars per student that you would actually attach to a school for library services. Increase access to avid coursework, increase access to PTEC programming across the system, increased access to dyslexia support. We have about 15 different sites that still need access to the new MTA program, and so this will provide support around that. And then, of course, work around special populations and what typically is called RTI, but really now we're moving more towards a multi-tiered system of support which looks at interventions for students on the behavioral side as well as the academic side. For extended day and summer programming, this funding will be used primarily for exactly that, extended day and programming after school. We will be working with Mr. Parala's department to collaborate with community-based resources in our community to provide extended day services to our families. We'll also be maintaining an elevated summer program. This year is probably, well, it is by far the largest summer program we've had for as long as I can remember. It's more than quadrupled. And so our goal is to maintain high level of summer programming so that we can use that summertime to help continue to close gaps that might be perpetuated as years go on. And then we are establishing this year for the first time summer bridge programs, which we intend to continue for Algebra I and English I. So students who are in eighth grade that are transitioning to the ninth grade. Algebra I and English I bridge programs are intended to provide them with advance access to some of that coursework so that they are ready when they hit ninth grade. And then finally, of course, building upon our partnerships that we have in the community. For behavioral support and mental health, maintaining our culture of care clinic that we've established and adding 20 additional therapists over the course of next school year. We have been working on our social and emotional framework and specifically the standards connected to the instruction we want to provide students in the classrooms. Elementary and junior high are finished. We still need to work on high school next year, and then those will be embedded. We also want to increase the access to restorative practices specifically at the secondary level. And then social work and behavioral supports, there are needs for more of that across our system, and so we would leverage this funding to make that available. And then have more access to our counselors in terms of trying to alleviate some of the focus on distribution of testing and more focus on the guidance and counseling portion of their work. For professional learning, our focus is primarily around math and literacy. Those are the two building blocks that really are the foundation of pretty much every content area. So we will be leveraging a chunk of this funding to really focus on coaching, best practices coaching. We have 12 research-based best practices that we focus on in our system. Our goal over the next three years is to elevate four of those best practices and help all teachers actually reach a level of proficiency in those areas. We will be accelerating our work on our math and literacy plans, paying for our, and completing our work around the reading academies, which are required by law, that focus around early childhood literacy and the science of reading. We will be expanding our leadership development process that we've been working on for many years around Holdsworth, which has been very great for the system or very productive. And then, of course, providing executive coaching to our leadership at the schools as they implement these things here in the classroom. For technology, we would like to update some of our data systems to provide our teams with access to data that's visualized in a way that can be consumed more meaningfully. We are looking at screeners, specifically math screener, for our possibility in the next coming years. Right now, we use, we have a math screener. We're looking for one that actually provides a little more granular data so we can understand a little bit better about where kids' gaps may be, and then updating some of our instructional software. And when I say instructional software, that's a very broad term, really around resources like quiz, like gizmos and other things that we have in the system that are actually resources within the curriculum that teachers can access to use to provide instruction. And then finally, the last one is infrastructure. And our primary objective and most of the funding that you're noticing in this column is really about pre-K expansion. There is approximately $25 million set aside for facility updates that will be required possibly for pre-K expansion, which would include either classrooms and/or any bathrooms that might need to be added. I have to emphasize that this is a very, this is a rough estimate about what that cost may be. We're still in the process of analyzing that, but that's what about $25 million is set aside for, including costs for the additional teachers that would need to be added in order to make pre-K available to all four-year-olds within the community. There's also some funding set aside for transportation and for some of the positions that need to be put in place to help, like a foreman and a router, to help distribute where the buses need to go in order to facilitate some of the students' access to our specialized programs. With all of this, one of the things we've talked about at the very beginning was that it was important that we looked at this from an equity standpoint to ensure that campuses with the greatest need receive a specific set of services and resources and that it wasn't just a one-size-fits-all. And so Dr. Brown has been working with her department to really establish a tiered system that would allow us to look at schools based on those tiers and to distribute resources that would allow everyone to kind of come to the field on equal footing. So what you'll see on the right-hand side of the screen are baseline supports. So there are specific supports that all elementary campuses and secondary campuses will have in common. So for example, in elementary, you'll notice that we will, our goal is to ensure that all elementary campuses, including those that are not title, because supplanting is not an issue in this with ESER, will have at least an instructional coach, will have at least a, I'm trying to read here, a teacher's assistance to help assist with the PLCs, and then also testing facilitators to help us, as I was mentioning earlier, help us to allow counselors to dedicate their time focusing on counseling. And then, of course, every campus will engage in coaching specifically around the best practices connected to reading and mathematics, and we receive either seven to nine touch points over the course of the school year. Secondary, you're also going to notice very similar things. They'll also receive the coaching, and the coaches, and they'll receive the testing facilitators, which you're going to notice that's a little bit different on secondary versus elementary, is the restorative practices specialist. So a person that will really help the campuses at the secondary level integrate restorative practices and behavioral supports on their campuses. And then finally, last, one of the things we've talked about is if you're going to add resources to campuses, there needs to be structures at the district level to support those positions to make sure they're successful. So you'll see on the bottom, there are some central office supports that will be accessible to campuses to help them in their process. So behavior specialists, we'll have instructional facilitators that will be housed out of Dr. Brown's office that will really be assisting teachers and leaders in terms of their implementation of the curriculum in their, in the actual schools. Best practices coaching, supports from the district level to help teachers as they implement the MTSS system that's going to be new. And then also, of course, any curricular resources and specialized support that campuses may need. Those are the baseline. So what I basically am trying to say is that's something that will be in common across the district, regardless of which school you're at. But we also know that there are different schools that have a need of even more assistance. So the way schools are basically stratified right now are they're stratified into three categories. One is called basic, one is essential, and one is targeted. Basic, in a general sense, are schools that are performing fairly well. They may have a leader that's been in place for a significant amount of time. There is a positive culture at the school. There's lots of, it'd be a very general, well-functioning school, and academically is performing. Schools that find themselves in that category will have access to additional funding but not necessarily more people beyond the baseline unless they have extra title money or things within their own system that they could leverage to fund. And if you're a basic school, what we're proposing is that you would have access to $30,000 additional dollars to fund additional resources or needs that you may have to close gaps at your school. If you're an essential school, what we would say is that you have access to a menu of options in terms of people, that you can select one additional position beyond the baseline to assist you based on your individual needs. So while every school may have an instructional coach, a principal may decide that they have a challenge in both reading and math, and they want to separate those two focus areas for the coaches so they can spend more time in the classrooms around that. And so a principal may say, I actually want to hire another additional coach, and I want this person to be focused on reading, and this other person to be focused on math. That would be an option. Other options that are on that menu could include a restorative practices specialist, a student support interventionist. So if the principal is deciding that they really need more people to work with students in small groups to close gaps, they could hire a person for that. Class size reduction teachers, teacher's assistants, the list is there. And it's designed for principals to have some autonomy and flexibility to look into their own expertise and know the situation at their own school to make a decision under the direction of the assistant superintendent that's working with them and the executive directors. If they are essential, they'll be, we're inviting them to select one of these menu items and also have access to about $7,500 of additional funding sources. Now, the initial question is, why would you only give $7,500 to essential and $30,000 to basic? And really, what you have to think about is an FTE is dollars. So the average teacher costs about $62,600 as a baseline pay. And so if you add that plus the $7,500, it's almost double the amount that a basic school would actually receive. Targeted, which is the, most of those campuses that are in the SSN network, which are those of greatest need, have access to the most. So they would receive access not only to one of these items in terms of personnel on the list, but they would also have access to receiving $15,000 additional dollars on top of their money. So this is an important component to our plan because it was very, it was, for us, it was a priority to make sure that there was some equitable way to distribute resources, to make sure that there is an equal playing field and that people who, students who are attending schools that really needed additional resources had access to those things, at the same time recognizing that if you came from a school that was populated by a more affluent student population, doesn't necessarily mean that you don't need, for example, coaching or other things. So ESER gave us a unique opportunity to not worry about supplanting, which was something we really wanted to take advantage of. The last part I wanted to focus on this evening is just ESER II and just emphasize that ESER II is a completely different funding bucket, so to speak. It is close, like I said, to $60 million. About $45 million of that will be focused primarily on enrollment stabilization that has taken place over the course of COVID. And so administrations are recommending that the board approve the ESER plans as I have presented them this evening. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. Mrs. Fowler.
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Wertz, I wanted to ask, on the page where you had tiered.
Yes.
I wanted to ask why the restorative practices specialist is only for secondary and not at the elementary level?
Restorative practices are primarily, the issue is really right now that we need additional assistance is at the secondary level. We have been, we have lots of supports that are being available at the elementary level, and many of those schools are already using restorative practices, but the focus right now is really at the secondary is where that's missing. And so Dr. Brown made the recommendation that we really add that to secondary to help support that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Ms. McMorra.
Thank you so much. I could tell how much work and thought has been poured into this. I was curious if there were any big findings with the ESER survey. Were there any pivotal, you know, changes? Or were there any big, you know, trends that you noticed?
Yeah, I can share with you some of the trends. They were not really different than what we as a staff had already predicted. They did tend to be a little different based on who you were actually speaking to, and there were some. So I can give you some examples. So for example, when it came to the three most important priorities, it came out to curriculum support specifically around English, language arts, and mathematics, additional support for reading and writing, and then behavioral intervention. And then when it came down to which three supports were primarily the focus for mental health or emotional well-being, it was lessons, more lessons for teachers or for counselors to use with students, parent support in helping their own children who are struggling from mental or emotional issues such as anxiety or depression, and then more opportunities to receive individual counseling. And the good thing for us is these things were already embedded into our plan. There were some distinctions in some of the groups. For example, if you were a student that attended JJAEP, that small group tended to, they didn't necessarily articulate a need around behavioral interventions. They may have chosen something else. When it came to technology, it was really around technology hardware, like such as laptops, Wi-Fi and infrastructure. Let me see, one other one I wanted to tell you. Most of the parents were aligned with campus staff, community members, and district staff, but more parents selected school tutoring as a priority and need over a behavioral intervention. If you ask staff or community, behavioral interventions were elevated as a need, one of the top three. If you stratified it out by parents, parents would suggest that tutoring was needed more than behavioral support. That was probably the biggest one difference. And then students, they were asking specifically, and this at the high school level, were specifically asking for more curricular support and after-school tutoring and more opportunities for high school credit recovery. If you pulled the high school students out, which were the majority of our survey takers, that was something that was a little bit unique and different. But other than that, it pretty much fell right where we anticipated it to be, and they were pretty aligned with each other in terms of the different groups about what they were looking for.
That's good. Can we go back to the slide about instructional support? That's good that our plan was aligned with, you know, a lot of our trends in our survey. The dyslexia support, can you elaborate a little bit on that? Because I know, you know, that our dyslexia screeners are, you know, we're trying to identify so that we can put the proper interventions in place to meet our students at the elementary level so that they can be successful the whole rest of their school career. And I know that this is not a district-wide or even a statewide issue, but screening for dyslexia, you know, I feel, and I think it's a growing trend, unfortunately. I think a lot of kids fall through this, the cracks. So I'm curious to know what our plans are specifically for dyslexia support.
So dyslexia, we have, we are phasing out one specific program for dyslexia, and we have implemented a new one in the last few years at the elementary level. The challenge was, is it's based at each elementary school. And so students who were at a school where it was not offered, we always gave them the opportunity to transfer to a school where it was offered. But the problem is, is that because of the problem you're describing, which is many, many more students are being identified with dyslexia, the number of students with dyslexia needing dyslexia service outpaced the number of teachers who could actually provide it. So this actually would allow us to hire 15 additional dyslexia teachers so that every elementary school would have access to the program, and students would no longer have the need to transfer to another school to receive the services based on that need.
That's wonderful. That's huge, and I think we will see the benefits of that. Okay, and again, we've talked about this before. I'm elated to hear about the additional curricular resources and excited to see that in Curriculum Central. That's mainly what I, the only questions I think I had. I will say, the reading academies, if we can go back to the professional learning slide, the more support we could put into that, the better. I just completed the reading academy myself. I finished Module 12. And I can say now firsthand, it's a lot. It's good stuff. It's good stuff, but it is truly an academy. I mean, it's, it's what I would imagine a master's level online course would entail. And that's what I'm hearing, um, from a lot of colleagues too, so I know it's not just me.
Right.
Um, now it's good stuff. Um, we're getting back to the science of reading and, um, I'm really hoping that what our teachers and administrators learn through the reading academy can trickle down to best practices in the classroom and come to fruition. So if it hasn't already been explored, I would love for us to consider possibly allowing our teachers. As, I know third grade, I believe, if I'm correct, third grade in AIC has already completed the reading academy. Now we're moving down to second grade. And, um, I would love to explore the, the possibility of allowing our teachers to, you know, get subs so they can complete at least part of the reading academy during the workday. Because the reality is if we make teachers do that during their own time, sixty, I mean, for me, it took longer than sixty hours. But a sixty-hour academy doing that outside of work hours, most of our teachers have families and other obligations. We want this to take flight and we also want to respect our teachers' time. And so, you know, they all go above and beyond and attend PDs, you know, and, and conferences and stuff like that. But a sixty-hour web-based academy, yeah, it's difficult to stay engaged and it's difficult to retain what you're learning. Um, it's good stuff and we want it to take, take flight in the classroom. So I would just really reiterate that the more support we can throw our teachers in completing that reading academy, um, you know, and being able to do so when they can focus, the better. And so I'm really happy to see that we're prioritizing that. It's a lot. It's a lot. But it's important, so. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. If I could just piggyback off of, um, one thing we were talking about for dyslexia services. So did I hear you say that for those students that are now needing the services for dyslexia, they will not have to go to another campus to see that is our intention?
Yes, that is the intention. With these additional staff members, we should have dyslexia services, the new program at all the campus. We'll have teachers to staff everybody. We, we've been slowly phasing this in, um, and this will allow us to catch completely up, so.
That's great. One of those other opportunities that now we have a chance to do. Are there any other services where our students, particularly at the, um, elementary level, have to attend different campuses to receive any services or was this?
Outside of special programs, now some, there are some students that are in special programs because the equipment or the environment is that way, but general programs like dyslexia, for example, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Willbanks.
Thank you, President Mays, and, uh, thank you, Ms. McMorrow, for your firsthand account of the reading academies. I know, uh, over the years, there's been a big religious battle on how best to teach reading and hopefully this good science-based approach will put that religious war to bed. Um, but yes, it is a big burden and, and it's a big, a big concern of Dr. Wertz, the amount of time and effort to launch it. But I think everyone I've talked to, including Dr. Wertz and now you, have said that it's really good stuff and rock solid. So, um, yeah, I, I'm looking forward to that getting rolled out and being able to apply additional resources of that. And not only that, but, um, it's one thing to sit through sixty hours of webinar, but we know from best practices and, and the research, it's even better when there's a coach helping them implement those strategies in real time along with that learning. And I assume that's, um, what you mean by those additional resources. Um, let's bubble up to the top level and, you know, I don't know if you need to throw up the slide with the big plan. You've got, I think.
I'll try to see it. My eyes are failing me. I'm like, this is.
There we go.
In front of me.
Yeah, the big buckets.
There we go.
Uh, that's a lot of dollars, but I think that's the right allocation. I'm a little, I mean, I've had a day job and I haven't really had time. We just got this. So I'd like a little more time. I don't know if tonight's the night to, you know, approve this. I'd like a little more time to look at these numbers, but I can tell you just right off the cuff, um, they look good. Um, the infrastructure in terms of, I mean, we know, talk about high-yield strategies. Um, universal pre-K is a high-yield strategy and now we have the opportunity of a lifetime on something that we didn't know how we would be able to pay for. Um, and kudos to you guys for kind of building that in and knowing, hey, now we have a way forward on universal pre-K. Um, so that I'm all for. Um, on the instructional support and, and the daycare, um, and, you know, some of the other ones, but specifically those two, you know, one thing I've been blown away with over, over the, um, years is the detail that you've put in every plan. And, uh, a plan is not just the action, but it's the dollars and how do you measure success? So my question to you is this, I assume you're building in those KPIs or those key measures of success um, into the plan. I don't need a laundry list of what they are, but just, you know, if you could share with you in the planning process, ha- have you already identified what those are and, and what, how is that baked into your planning process?
So they're not, that part, we know what we're going to use to measure those things. We have to put them, we haven't completely finished that all out in the plan. And the reason being is because we had to finalize the strategies and understand how you're going to do two things. One, measure the quality of implementation of the strategy, which we call the process, and then the impact. So, um, Dr. Barlow's department will be working with us on a quarterly basis to really measure how these things are actually happening. I can highlight one as an example that might be helpful. So coaching is a, is a, we have a system that we use in, with coaches called E-Suite. And when a, when a teacher is being coached around a specific best practice, we'll just say small group instruction as an example or standards alignment as an example, there are specific behaviors that the teacher and the students are doing. And so what happens is the teacher sets goals around that best practice and has a plan and that plan is logged in E-Suite, um, with the coaches and all of our coaches will be doing this. What happens is as a teacher progresses through mastery of that best practice based on evidence, they earn something called growth indicators and the system will tell us, for example, how often teachers are receiving their touch points. So for example, our strategy is they receive nine coaching touch points over the course of the year. We can see how many teachers are actually getting nine coaching touch points by coach, how many teachers are progressing and earning growth indicators under that coach, when that's not happening, what supports we need to put in place to make sure that that's happening. And then we can then measure how students are performing under that teacher who have actually earned the growth indicators. Is there a relationship there between those two things? So that's the kind of structures we're putting in place around these to make sure that we're measuring not only is the process happening, but is the process then resulting in an outcome that's connected to a student? And if the answer is no, there are two disparate processes or two disparate outcomes that don't really have a relationship with each other, then we will pause and reconsider. Yeah.
Yeah. When the reality is the battlefield dictate otherwise, we readjust our plan. So that's something you guys have been really good at. Um, and I would, you know, it's, you know, for us as a board, we're focused on student outcomes and specifically with this endeavor, closing those learning gaps that exist from the COVID loss. And I would be curious if in that process, we could ask that, you know, those nine touching, those intermediate KPIs or, or goals, that's too much minutia for us as a board, but those student outcome-focused goals and measures, if those could be shared with the board?
Yes. In fact, the goals will be shared with you. So, um, what you don't see here.
Well, in the performance towards those goals.
Yeah, so what you'll see is there's a table and an example, the best way I give, the best example I can share with you is if you, on the website, if you go to the House Bill Three goals that you adopted earlier, there's tables at the district level and for every single campus um, that actually articulates by student subgroup, goals over a five-year period based upon a baseline of two thousand nineteen where we started. We're going to probably adjust that once we realize where we're at because there will be learning loss that we're going to assess once our star scores come in. What you'll notice with these new targets, you're going to see a very similar table for every school and the district level the same around these, what I call vital signs for every, for all the campuses. So you'll be able to see, and we will report them out to the board, our, our progress towards those goals and when we have gaps and not gaps and why we think it's happening or not happening. But that'll be in place for not only at the district level, for every campus that leads up to that district.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Um, and then in your presentation, you mentioned four best practice areas that you guys were going to elevate was kind of the broad strategy with this money. Um, what I assume data-driven instruction is one of those? Uh, no?
Yeah. Well, it's embedded in, it's embedded, it's embedded in one of those, but that's not what we call it. But that's the strategy, but that's not one of the four.
Right, yeah. So what are the four again?
So it's assessment, uh, standards alignment, construction differentiation. And DDI is embedded, actually threaded through most of.
Most of those, right, right.
I was teasing.
Yeah, I've been getting a lot of that tonight. So part of that, one of the, one of the strategy in, on the instruction, the PLC, extended PLC time, I assume that extended, part of that extended PLC time is for just that.
Yeah, exactly. So they would use it for DDI, for planning. Um, PLCs are really, so this is the thing about PLCs, I'll, I'm gonna, I'll stand up for a second and talk about these. PLCs have kind of gotten this idea that it's, a PLC has almost gotten this word as it's the name of a meeting. But a PLC is actually a professional learning community. It's a group of people who come together to learn with each other and to make decisions. Yeah, it's a culture. So, um, what, what this is really designed to do is to give elementary teachers time to look at their data, to go through the DDI process, to strategize around which strand, which, uh, lessons or activities are going to help kids close gaps. And sometimes what happens is teachers use the time to actually plan and co-plan with each other. So this PLC time would be used for that purpose. It's basically, we're trying to give teachers more time to work with each other, to your point. There's only so many hours in a day and you can't just plan at night when you're, when you're tired. So we want to give more time to teachers at the elementary.
And so another example of this, uh, and outcome of having this additional time, um, I know in some districts across the state, they use their PLCs so that, uh, when they go through a UNL, let's say Long Division, um, the teachers get together and compare notes on what percentage of their students mastered and what didn't. And I assume one of the five teachers in the pod be the rock star and taught it really well and maybe a couple others didn't struggle. Would they then have that time to then maybe, um, when they do enrichment and, um, intervention time, maybe have the rock star take the kids that didn't?
Yeah.
Mastery and.
That's completely, the campus have autonomy to do that.
Right.
Yeah, they have complete autonomy to do that. Sometimes it's about reteaching too. Um, yeah.
I'm glad you mentioned the big A word because I know I share with Mr. Hogg uh, great enthusiasm for the word autonomy and, and empowering our campuses to have more autonomy. And, and I guess one of the great things I like about your plan is we're not dictating every single dollar. We're giving the discretion to each campus. And I think when you're dealing with a, um, issue this big across the whole system, I think it would be impossible to dictate every single thing. And really, I think it would be an inappropriate, it's the opposite of propitious, auspicious. Um, I don't think it would be, uh, setting yourself up for success if you didn't give those campuses agency in the process uh, to help make those decisions in, you know, in a lot of ways. They're the, not every campus is the same and they're the experts on what's going to work best as interventions for their students. And I'm just real, I mean, I'm glad that it's, um, that's built into the plan. If you could go to that slide. I said yes. Oh, data systems. Um, first off, so part of the success of doing data-driven instruction uh, is good reliable system so that we can aggregate the data across a team, a PLC team, across a campus and across the district. So are you look, you said you're looking for a new math screener, for instance? Are we looking at, assume I station math?
No, uh, we're, one of them that we will consider is math. Um, it's a.
From the NWEA?
And it's a, it's a, it's, it's really reliable. It's very well-known. It allows you to really understand which portions of the math of, of math building blocks kids are actually struggling with. Um, and so that's one of them that we're looking at. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get to, all right now, our current screener gives us this holistic idea of how kids are progressing in mathematics. But frankly, I'm seeking something that gives me a little more granular information so the teacher can then leverage that information to make better decisions. And so we're in the process of looking around.
Well, I've got a selfish, yeah, I've got a selfish reasons for wanting to know that because I know my colleagues and other, um, board members across the state and across the country, they use that screener data to populate their dashboards on student progress in terms of mastery of certain teaks and standards. Um, and kind of as a gauge. So I assume the one we're looking at is going to be one that's widely used. So not only when the teachers look at the data that come from the screeners, they'll be able to compare their students with students across the country.
I, I can't answer that question yet because I have to go through the process of identifying the screener. We haven't done that yet, but it's.
But is that a requirement for the evaluation?
It, I, I haven't.
Can it be?
Part. I can put that in there, sure. I think the thing about it is we, you're, what you're referring to is a national norm reference assessment, which allows us to compare other kids that are in a similar age bracket across the country the same. And I think when it comes to a screener, that's very helpful. So I, I don't see why we wouldn't. Um, the only reason why you, I, the only reason why that becomes an issue on, on, on assessments that are outside of screeners is because we assess different standards and so that the thing kind of looks different. So, um, but yeah, I don't have any, I have no reasons why we wouldn't look at that uh, if you're trying to make sure that your students in Texas are, are compared to their counterparts that are competing for similar spots in universities and things like that. But I haven't established criteria.
I could interject just a quick context because I think it's important in all of the discussion. So, uh, this is three years. We are very mindful and we're still working on pacing this. We talk about a new screener, different positions, different support for the schools, different resources and things like that. We have, those things have to be paced out to be implemented with fidelity, number one, but also to make sure that the teachers and the campuses can actually have time if we implement new screeners and things like that. That's a big change for a system, right? Uh, both training and adoption of the screener and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah, it's not overnight.
So just the context that these things, even dyslexia and support and things like that, all of those things are, are being mapped out so that the right pacing will yield the success of those tools and resources, the implementation. So just a reminder context because it may sound to, uh, individuals who may be watching that all these things are going to start happening in August. And while it's exciting, it really, the reality at the school level, it would be overwhelming if all these changes were happening at one time. Now, there will be changes because some of these will be year one, but we have to be mindful of the pacing so that it can be done with fidelity, but also paced at the right level for our teachers.
So, yeah, my final, thank you, Dr. Gravassos. And, and I'll just add to that is I think utilizing ESER funds for those big-ticket technology purchases that are going to elevate and increase the success, those high-yield levers that we have like data-driven instruction, um, is the way to go um, in terms of the technology component of the bucket that we're using, the ESER funds. Um, and that, that is in, under the lens of our sustainability requirement, a good way to make those funds stretch out into the future. Um, finally, I just wanted, you know, be put at ease. If you could put up the, your last slide with the, the tiered supports for the campuses. On the basic level, on the one hand, thirty thousand dollars a year doesn't seem like a lot. So when I'm thinking of my favorite go-to strategy, hot, uh, high-yield strategy is, um, high dosage tutoring, you know, where they're tutoring at least three hours a week for a minimum of fifty hours a semester. That I, you know, thinking of our campus needing even of a ditto or a Butler, that didn't seem like it would go a long way for the amount of tutors required. Maybe it would. Or if they're planning on utilizing a partnership with someone like Reading Partners for reading intervention, that shared cost is thirty thousand a year. And so that's like one strategy for intervention. So, yeah, I mean, so I'm having trouble going from just thirty thousand at a campus to one point, a hundred ninety-four million dollars, uh, system-wide over three years. Um, and the, but then I agree, the bulk of the money should go where it's needed most and that's in the targeted schools. And so, you know, they only have fifteen thousand outside of those additional res. And so, you know, they only have $15,000 outside of those additional resources that we're gonna hire on the campus. So just put me at ease, because the, I'm, would have thought the amount of money available in those buckets for each school would be bigger, and it's not.
Well, two things. One is the targeted schools are all title, pretty much. So they all have access to title funds that the basic schools typically do not. So that's one thing, and they already have monies designated for tutoring within those title funds. $30,000 for tutoring is, for students specifically in the basic schools, pretty much should be sufficient. But I want to say this to keep in mind too, this is a plan. And when we assess, if we find out that there's a school that's in deep need that this is not sufficient for, we'll adjust for that. This is just an initial starting point to make sure there's some equity in the way that we go about approaching our, 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 our needs. The last thing I just want to make a comment about tutoring is, there's new statutes now around tutoring, around accelerated learning is basically what they call it. And how you apply that, how, how you structure it at your school, what's used for that. And so part of the dollars that will even attach to the system level will help to structure some of those things for the campus level. And Dr. Brand and I are gonna be collaborating around that. So as I mentioned, this is designed to give sufficient monies to get started. If we find that there's deficits somewhere that are, that people get stuck because there's not enough, then we'll come back to the drawing board and look at it.
Okay. So let me wrap up, and I, but I just thought of a question, which is more, I think, what I'd want to ask for staff to get back to us and not put you on the spot. And understanding ESER too, that's also a big pot of money. And it keeps talking about, you know, for use, sounds like it's exclusively for, no, what'd you describe?
Enrollment stabilization.
Enrollment stabilization. However, it was my understanding that there was a minimum amount used for enrollment stabilization, but that, you know, we could determine some other amount of that money to be put for use for learning loss recovery as well. So if I could get some specifics around those requirements, because that's an additional pool of money that I'm, I'm a lot more optimistic than my colleague, Mr. Chapa, and that I think we're going to see those kindergartners and those first graders and where we saw the most enrollment loss come back, once we're back to normal and we're providing good quality, tier-one in-person instruction again. So that would mean that we would have more of those funds potentially to use towards those tutors and other high-yield strategies for the learning loss. So I'd like to give my hand, I, you know, I'd apers to just earmark that just for enrollment stabilization. So, and then finally, to my colleagues, I would say, I could use more time to go through. I might be persuaded if the rest of my colleagues are ready to approve this tonight. But we kind of just got this last minute, so I'd like to kind of have a weekend to go over.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Okay. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Wertz, thank you for this, and let me tell you what I'm focused on, our academic targets. What are outcomes, right? And you and staff were, more than a generation, gave us probably more information than what we needed to. But what we need to be responsible for is, are these federal funds, which are still kind of shocking, I didn't expect that, like, still kind of shocking to us to come in. And as my colleagues were going through, we are make, we do have to make sure these dollars are being used responsibly to educate kids. But what's that for? It's about student outcomes. So I would ask that as we, as a board, are developing a new three-to-five-year goal strategic plan, this pretty much should be one of our goals, right? ESER student outcomes of how that's happening, whether it's third and eighth grade reading proficiency, English 1 and 2, Algebra 1, have some specific, big, three-to-five-year goal, and then interim goals each year to show some achievements. The other thing I'd ask staff to do is a standardized reporting mechanism to us, to keep us updated on what those goals, and let you, Dr. Wertz, as the true academic professional, make some of these decisions on where we're going and what we're trying to do from that process for our academic targets, because our goal is outcomes. How do we produce these outcomes? Are we recovering from this loss? And that's what the ESER funds are for, to recover. And listen, we all know, this is not, this is a good plan. This is not a one-year plan. This is, we only have funding for three, but really, this is probably a three-to-five-year plan to truly get out of this hole. So I, I would just ask staff, and you don't have to do it now, and as you have the targets, and Dr. Kavassos, as we start developing as a board, our goals, I think one of our key student outcome goals should be related to, directly to some of these items within you guys developing the interim goals that would occur each year for us to get to that stage, is what I would just say, with a very strict outcomes reporting mechanism, so that we know once a quarter, we will have some time during our board meeting to report on this and discuss the outcomes that are occurring from that. And with that, Ms. Mays, if we're ready, I'm more than ready to make a motion on this to approve, because I think we've got a plan, and this is a flexible piece that we'll be coming about. And it's all, like a budget, like anything, can be adjustable and move forward, and it helps our administration move forward with that.
Okay, Mr. Hogg, if you can just hold your motion for just.
I can.
One second.
Yeah, sure.
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Mays. Don't have to hold it. I, I can make it in discussion, but I'll just keep it brief. So, sorry, I'm, I'm pausing on teasing you or not teasing you, but it's not, not appropriate, so I won't. I think this is a great, a great plan. What you've presented to us is the, the 30,000-foot level, really. The big, the big buckets, the big rocks, as you always like to say. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I think I've said it in previous meetings. Not only is the, the opportunity to dig out of the pandemic and COVID slide, but it is truly an opportunity for us to crack the nut on closing achievement gaps and accelerated rate and student achievement. And there's, there's some of the things that you have articulated in here that are, are known issues that we've had for years, that we haven't been able to budgetarily address. And this is our opportunity. I love what, you know, with the, the increase of the TAs and the coaching, the instructional coaches under the guidance and counseling, the testing facilitators for campuses that they've been screaming for testing facilitators for years, that that would help them, that would help their counselors stay focused on the kids. And that's in this plan, and that is fantastic. And what I'm hopeful, along the lines of what Mr. Hogg stated in moving forward and looking at the outcomes and what the, the frequency of the, that metrics review and the ROI review is, is really what is going to also be taken from this to move into a permanent state. And I think there's going to be several things that we'll be able to take out of this. To me, that's what the opportunity here is, is really cracking that nut and making it to where we can slide out of the increased funds from ESER and still handle it and maintain it within our current budget, or what our budgetary constraints usually are, so that we can have high-yield accelerated learning and achievement and closing the gaps. I know that's what you're in it for. This is just such a great opportunity. I'm excited to see what, what happens. And I, I appreciate all the work that you and so many people have put into this. This is, this is really, literally what you're showing us is the, the tip of the iceberg. And this is a huge iceberg. So thank you for all of the work you've already done and what, what you'll be continuing to do. Look forward to, if that's quarterly, as Mr. Hogg suggested, every six weeks, whatever that looks like, to report back to us. Very interested in looking and monitoring those outcomes for our students. So, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And just to piggyback off that for just a second. Yes, these, these needs, and we're calling that the ESER funds are for recovery, but for our district, for districts all across the nation, this recovery are things that we were already eyeing in on of needing help prior COVID. And COVID really just exacerbated so many of those things. So once again, that makes, I believe, all of my colleagues very excited to be able to use this opportunity to fix gaps that existed pre-COVID and have just grown. So just wanted to piggyback off of what he said. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. I just have two, two quick points that I want to make, and I, and these are things you've probably already thought about. One loops back to our budget discussion earlier. You know, these are, because you've identified the, the proposals you have, you've put a lot of thought into, and you've picked the things that you think are the most high-yield. And we're not the only district that's gonna be looking for resources to effectuate those high-yield strategies. And so when it comes to the personnel resources, we need to, we need for those high-yield strategies, for example, TAs, some of those positions are on the lower end of our hourly salary schedule or pay schedule that we did, is built into the budget proposal, as I understand it, are, have some targeted equity raises going towards them. But as the market heats up, just not in the private sector, and a lot of the positions we have that I would say pay to the $12, the $15 an hour range, as we have to compete more and more with the private sector with some jobs that are moving that direction already as a result of the economic recovery, and, and it's happening at a pretty fast clip now, so things could evolve over the next few months. Maybe, and also, we, we're gonna, I believe, have to compete with other districts looking for the same type of folks. So it may be that we need to come back in the next few months, and Mr. Will Banks mentioned this earlier, take a deeper dive and, and look at if we need to do an early-year or mid-year budget adjustment for those positions. If it turns out that the equity raises that are built in are not yielding us the, the quality of folks or the number of folks that we need to, you know, pull off the ESER strategies that you've identified, and the, the TAs and those types of positions, I think, are critical to that. And so I, I think we would need to, we potentially need to be ready to move faster on adjusting those if we need to, to be competitive in the market. The second thing that I, I would add is, and I mentioned this last time, I mean, I, preschool is such a, a high-yield strategy, and we used our 19-bond to really expand our capacity there. We're getting, got HB3 funds to help us do that. And now we have the opportunity to take it even further. And so I'm really glad to see the infrastructure funds in there. And I know, though, the time limit that, that ESER regulations have put on us to, to do this in three years, what you're trying to do is, is essentially an infrastructure analysis that would normally be part of maybe a five-year or longer bond analysis. And so you're having to do it in a very short amount of time. And so what I would just encourage as part of that analysis that's happening at a really rapid pace to build out that infrastructure is, you know, a balancing equity of access. And so I think, you know, a tendency might be, and maybe it is, I, I haven't, you're still doing your analysis, and I'm, I'm interested to hear what comes of it. But it may be that there's some low-hanging fruit of, we identify a particular campus that has enough land that we can build a pretty big wing on it and have more of a preschool center. And so, you know, students from several campuses go there, and then they would go back to their home campuses for kindergarten. That may be the best strategy. But I would encourage us to look at, at, as part of the analysis is whether, you know, very, if it's possible, very modest or small additions at the home campuses, if that might yield us more students because of the relative ease of access of students being able, and maybe the attractiveness to the parents of them being able to send their kids to their local neighborhood school that they're gonna go to for kindergarten anyway, so there's not that transition year or two. I don't know which way that pans out, but between that and maybe seeing if there's a way, because it is an infrastructure issue, of if there's places where we already know, because of the 2019 bond, we have facility construction going on, if there's ways to build these projects in to get efficiencies with that, you know, to explore those options too. I'm, I'm very anxious to, for us to get down the road with expanding our pre-capacity, but, you know, I just want to make sure we don't, because it is a longer-term solution, even though the ESER funds are more short-term, let's take the time to make sure that we try to do it in the way that balance, you know, best balances equity of access and efficiencies in our, in our spending, because that especially is going to be an ongoing expense and benefit that, that we see for, for many, many years, well after ESER is done.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. And, and I like the fact that you said build on additional. You did not say pods. My students attended a school where it was pods. Mr. Hogg, I will give the mic back to you.
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ESER plans as presented by staff.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay. All present vote in the affirmative. Recommendation, motion passes. Thank you. Move forward to our next discussion action item. That is consider and possible action regarding proposed settlement agreement with Balfour Beatty LLC regarding CTEC project. Mr., Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Mays, and we recommend the approval of the proposed settlement agreement as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. At this time, I'd like to move that the board approved the proposed settlement agreement as discussed in closed session and authorized the superintendent to sign it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Hogg. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We now move to our section on the agenda item for our discussion item, which is our legislative update. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring a legislative update, and we welcome David Anderson in person, not in Zoom. Welcome him to the podium and to provide and lead us through a legislative update. David, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos, President Mays, trustees. We're pleased to be here. My colleague Kate Coolman is with me, and she'll take several of these points as we go through them. So, thank you. Fascinating discussion on the, on the presentation. I made several notes and plan to take those with me and, and as we go forward. So, we're going to give you a review of 140 days of legislative session. We're gonna do this in about 12 minutes. So, in our, in our earlier conversations with you, we talked quite a bit about the circumstances that, that made this session so unique. And as we look at those and, and show you what happened, I do want to remind you of your priorities, and you know these very well. These were certainly at the forefront of what we did on your behalf and at the direction of Dr. Kavassos and Dr. Hill during the session. There were a lot of things that led into this session, and we have these, identified several of these for you. You're very familiar with COVID-19. I know, I feel like I'm, I'm talking to Noah about the flood in terms of what the impact of COVID-19 was. You had to deal with these in a very significant way from, from mid-March 2020 until now. The, the circumstance, though, that was particularly unique was the, the financial one. Because when we talked in the fall, we said the, the session is gonna be about four things. The budget, the budget, the budget, and a little bit of redistricting. Well, if Dr. Barlow was going to give us an A-through-F accountability rating on my prediction on that, I think I'd get a D or an F, because clearly, it was not about the budget once or twice or three times. The economic circumstances certainly changed, but leading into the session, this is what dominated the circumstance. $4.6 billion shortfall predicted several months before. That was reduced to $1 billion as the session started. And then in May, with the revenue estimate that the controller is obligated to provide in the last 30 days of the session, he added additional $1.7 billion to the state's revenue forecast. That changed things tremendously, and more on the budget from Kate in just a second. The last circumstance that we have up here is winter storm hurry. And people will say, well, well, David, we only lost five days. Well, five days out of 140, we lost one week, one week out of 20 weeks. We lost 5% of the session to the storm. And you all are familiar with the way the legislature reacts. They respond to what is sure, what is salient, and what is certain. And what they were sure about was, there were a lot of people who were very upset about what happened during that week. what happened during that week. And they spent several weeks looking for appropriate parties to blame or inappropriate parties to blame. And I think they managed to identify some in both categories. In any other session, that would be very normal. If we had this circumstance, it would have made the session very, very different. But when you put the anticipated budget shortfall on top of the COVID and the impact it has on policy and access and communications, lay this on top of it, it led to a very strange session. From here now, let's look at what happens, okay?
Sure. Good evening, Kate Coleman. Thanks for having me. So to visit a little bit about the budget, and that's a good place to start, especially taking off from where David just took us. You know, we were all going in thinking this was going to be a tough budget session. And I think it's easy to forget, when we think of it that way, that a lot of really good things came out of the budget. We got it early. Whenever we, whenever the, the budget came out, it was agreed to largely on both sides. So you see some things here that are listed as it relates to education, but we had full funding of HB3, which was huge and something that leadership on all sides went in early and said, we're committed to this. We had enrollment growth funding and other pieces that were really important. We continue to talk about that. ESSER funding throughout the legislative session, but because things settled up so quickly on the budget, it's easy to forget what a big win we had in the budget in terms of funding for public education. So a big, a big piece there. And as you look over this, there's a few more highlights on exactly how all of that settled up. We, we talked there at the bottom about 1525. Of course, 1525 was the House Bill 3 cleanup bill. So moving on to that, looking at that bill again, kind of on the budget side of things, we, this, this bill was one that as we looked at it going into the legislative session, I think the caption on that bill was something like relating to public school finance, which means it could carry all sorts of legislation at some point during the session. Early on in the process, it really was kept pretty tightly to HB3 cleanup specific things. We, we heard a lot about the CTE funding, especially for small and rural schools. The fast growth allotment was another thing that you heard a lot of in terms of the 1525 and HB3. As it moved through the process, it did pick up a few more things, but ultimately, the ultimate bill that was negotiated included a number of things and ended up in a pretty good spot. There were modifications to the fast growth allotment. The CTE adjustments were added into that. You see a long list here and I'm not going to go down every little thing, but there was some funding specific to ESSER dollars. There were a lot of discussions throughout the legislative session on ESSER funding, not just your funding. There were discussions about any stipulations or strings attached that might come with the funding that comes to you. Of course, ESSER $3 came. You see here that some of ESSER 2 was spent on the Hold Harmless, similar to the way that ESSER 1 was utilized, but ultimately also on the discretionary spending at the state level. So there were some specifications in a number of bills and including in 1525 that said, here's how you have to spend some of the discretionary funding, the commissioner's funding, the governor's funding at the state level for education. A few bills of note. One big bill that we heard a lot about was the accountability-related bill as well as the state takeover bill that was at least, you heard a lot about it in relationship to Houston ISD, but it was a statewide bill. It was not specific to Houston ISD. That bill went through a number of different negotiations. It went, it, it included a very different language throughout the process, but ultimately it ended up in a pretty good place. And you got some direction on specifically DNF, differentiation between DNF, and some due process pieces in that legislation as well, that I think are good for the state and school districts in working together on some of those things. HB 4545 is an example of some of the, of a bill that the state said, here's how you have to spend some of the discretionary funding at the state level. So that creates some accelerated learning committees and some specifics on how we use state discretionary money for accelerated learning. 4465 is another bill that was in that category. It actually didn't pass, but again, a, a series of bills that were focused on how we spend some of that state funding from ESSER 1, 2, and 3. 1356 is an interesting bill because it establishes a tutoring program. Heard you talking a lot about tutoring earlier. AISD actually weighed in on this bill to, to specify that at one time, this bill was not permissive and it said you had to use potentially retired, I think, or as well as active teacher associations to fulfill some of these tutoring roles. They did change that to a may instead of a shall. So this bill, at this point, creates a tutoring program that gives you a little flexibility on how you can access tutors. The state will, the, the commissioner will be able to identify associations that you can utilize that through. 1716 was another bill that we heard a lot about during the session. It ultimately creates supplemental special education services program, again, using federal dollars that are coming down. This will be funneled through the state as well as the education service centers. So there's some specifics on how that money was funneled to the students, because it is about a $1,500 grant. So it is going through the state, which was important to a lot of people in that discussion. Seven, and then HB 547, which is the homeschool participation bill. That bill has been working through the process for years and years. It's, it's been on, as a part of the discussion for a number of years. This year, it did ultimately pass and the way they got that bill to pass was by making it permissive. So it is something that a school district will be able to decide whether they allow homeschool students to participate or not. I think you'll hear more about this bill as it goes through the rulemaking process. It's currently going through the UIL rulemaking process and I think you'll hear more about exactly how that will play out at the district level then. But this was an example of a bill that has been not, has not passed in the past and did get, get passed this year, but again, based on the permissive nature of it. I'm going to turn it back over to David to talk a little bit about TRS legislation and close this out before we do Q and A.
So there were several bills that affected the teacher retirement system, a topic that is of great interest in Arlington to the staff as well as to the trustees. 1385 is the, is the bill that speaks to the TRS operations itself. This was the, the TRS sunset bill and we noted several different points on there. This is a bill that we could easily take a two-hour workshop and get Scott involved with it and, and really dig into the details on it. But it is a bill that certainly requires some attention from your staff and I know that, that AISD has the, the expertise to really dig into this and figure this out. 1444 is a bill that focuses on the health benefits. And in particular, this bill eliminates the District of Innovation option that a number of districts have used to waive the requirement that says that you may only offer active care. And by waiving that, districts did bring in a different one. The District of Innovation seemed to drive some attitude changes at TRS as well as interaction from people here in the room that, that had an effect on this. And I think that what we have seen over the last probably 28 months or so is very different attitude about interaction and input from the field, from the leadership at TRS. And in that regard, that's been a long slog, but it's been one that I think AISD should really be patting themselves on the back because you helped drive this in a very, very significant way. The regional healthcare advisory committees are established in each of the 20 regional service centers. Those will be comprised of nine superintendents. And if this next comment sounds familiar, it's because it's one I've heard from staff and from you for several years now. The notion of looking at regional cost variations and regional opportunities. And that's really what these committees will look at around the state and report back to Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Speaker, the chairs of the appropriate committees, the Commissioner of Education, and the Executive Director of TRS before the next legislative session. Senate Bill 202 is one that I'm, I'm sorry to have to report to you that this bill passed. It was one that was slipping through that our friends at TASBO talked with us about and we did try to affect this in a way and ran into an absolute brick wall for a lot of different reasons, but specifically because it was one that the Retired Teachers Association was, was supportive of. And this is the one that says that you may not pass on directly or indirectly any of the costs that the district has with people who are involved within the retire rehire. So that's one that certainly has a financial impact on the district, depending on what the impact of retire rehire is. From our conversations with other districts around the state, the concern is that the shortage of, of qualified educators will be exacerbated because you're going to need people to do the sort of things that, that you've just heard about in your plan. And that will create the need for retirees to come back into the workforce. Very positive circumstance in many ways, but one that will affect your costs. The session always ends with unsettled issues and we're going to have at least two more opportunities to have the legislature consider unsettled issues, because we believe there will be a special session on or about July 27th or August 6th to deal with some non-education issues. And then one in late September that will deal with redistricting and the allocation of federal funds to the state of Texas, not to public education, but to the state for other issues. Among our unsettled issues, state assessment policies. We had a circumstance this time in which 81 members that we identified, signed a letter, made a statement, had some sort of pronouncement that they had concerns about the misuse of the state assessment program, that STAR was being asked to do more than it really was capable of doing. And yet, at the end of the session, very little happened that really spoke to the administration of our state assessment. Virtual education. One, yes, we did get the commission that will look at virtual ed over the next two years and that has some very positive possibilities. However, the bill that was worked on, I will tell you, Kate and my colleague Todd Webster are two of the, the four people who were very, very involved in this from the House and Senate side. We ended up with a bill for virtual ed that did all of the things that you wanted to see with regard to local decision-making, no penalties for, for funding because students are virtual on a part-time or full-time basis. That bill unfortunately got caught on the wrong side of the calendar on the last weekend. We believe it would have passed the legislature. I can't tell you that the governor would have signed it or allowed it to become law. His concerns about getting students back into school, in classrooms, in real time, is something that's very important. It's a, it's a goal that he shares with all of you I know. But what he would have done with that bill, it's hard to say. In the end, it wasn't addressed and so virtual education is something that could be addressed in a special. I'm not sure that it, it will be. Elections will come up in a special. And here we say, well, what does this matter to us? Because that deals with, depending on how you look at it, election integrity or voter suppression, somewhere along the spectrum, everybody lands. Our concern is that if the governor issues a broad call for elections in a special session, will that include the opportunity for legislation that would move to a uniform, a single uniform election date for school bonds and trustees, so that you're, you're only able to hold those elections in November? Will we see legislation filed that would put in a minimum voter turnout for a bond election to be certified or one that might require supermajority? These are all concerns that local governments have that could come up under that category. Chapter 313, not as significant perhaps here in Tarrant County as other parts of the state, but that was left pending and that is one that there is a significant push to get on the, on the call and one that affects schools and school finance in certain parts of the state, certainly more than others. Charter schools was really not addressed. We saw minimum changes in charter school legislation. In many ways, President Mays, this was the irresistible force meeting the immovable object. The interests of independent school districts versus the interests of the charter schools. And in the end, very little happened, something I think we talked about and predicted that we would not see much change there at all. The last point, which relates back to your goals and that's governance and the notion of, of reaffirming and underscoring the importance of local control and the right balance between the independent school districts and the state education agency and the appropriate role for our regional education service centers. I, I wish that I could report that we had more progress on that, but we really didn't. What we have is more authority at the state level and some erosion of your decision-making with regard to that. We can certainly talk more about some of those things going forward. But right now, we are in a, in a circumstance in which that balance is, is a bit out of kilter and, and hopefully we can get that back at some point. We're at the end of the session. Next steps, of course, rulemaking. Kate mentioned the rulemaking on, on 547, homeschool participation in UIL. That is at the UIL. Most of the rest of the rulemaking that will affect your circumstances and the policies you're responsible for will be commissioner rule or state board of education rule. And of course, part of our responsibility is to watch that and keep Dr. Cavassos and his team informed about that rulemaking. This becomes very important for us. We saw how some of the rules that were developed in response to House Bill 3 last time, perhaps didn't mirror that bill quite the way we, as, as school leaders interpreted that. Redistricting will be up in the fall. We would expect to see, because of the population growth, your legislative delegation change fairly significantly perhaps because of the population growth in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. We already mentioned the two special sessions we anticipate. We hope there will only be two, but, but we'll have to wait and see about that. And then of course, last interim charges, which are usually issued around December 1st. We'll say to you, as we do at the end of every session, that if there are some areas that are of specific interest to Arlington ISD that you would like to see addressed in interim charges, please give Dr. Cavassos the direction to talk with us so that we can begin to talk with the appropriate people about the importance of those topics. We'd be glad to answer any questions. We certainly appreciate your attention at the end of a very long day. Thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Coleman. And congratulations to you as well. It was very good to see you in person and we're so glad that you
Thank you. We're pleased to be here.
To be released from your spot. But thank you so much for the information that you provide. Thank you so much for the advocacy in your position that you do on behalf of districts and specifically AISD. Do I have any colleagues that have any questions and/or comments for Mr. Anderson? Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I just had a few, one question and really more just one statement. You know, we included in our legislative agenda and y'all helped us out a lot with issues related to virtual instruction, virtual education going forward. And I just wanted to take a minute to, you know this, but to explain, because I've been approached by people, we've all received the emails, we've seen some chatter on social media that, you know, Dr. Cavassos sent out an email last week and, and announced that, you know, we had sent out a survey on virtual ed and we were not going to be able to move forward with some of the things maybe that was preparing for because of the way that this bill turned out in the legislature. And the, the concern a lot of people seem to have is, well, why would you want to consider virtual ed when it seems like it didn't work out for most students this year? Our teachers were pulled in multiple directions. And I just want to reemphasize, since, since you brought it up and the bill hopefully will come back, I, I'm very hopeful will come back in a, in a special session and get passed. We're not intending, and this bill would not, continue any of the sort of bad practices or things that people, not necessarily bad practices, but things people had a concerns about over the course of the last year. This would create an opt-in program for students who want to do virtual education, for students who maybe want to do a virtual academy or, or maybe because of their family situation, they want to be able to take a class virtually as part of their other programming that they're, they're going through. Because we know virtual education is not the right choice for a lot of students. We knew that before COVID. Study after study backed that up. But what we're hoping to do, because our job is to serve students, is this was a situation where, yes, for many students, it wasn't an ideal environment and some students struggled with it, but we heard some success stories along the way of students who, for whatever reason, they flourished during virtual learning. Maybe they didn't have to worry about bullying at school or maybe they were able to focus more at home than in a classroom full of their friends who were distracting them. But for whatever reason, this seemed to work for some folk. for whatever reason, this seemed to work for some folks. And we had parents asking us fairly early on if there was a way that we could continue this type of programming on a more permanent basis, and this bill would allow us to do that. And so, we agree that virtual education is not right for most students, but it's right for some. And I think we have an obligation, both as a district and a state, especially with the investments that we've made over the last year in virtual education and the strides that we've made in a very short amount of time, to see those things through and do what's right by our kids. So I do hope that that bill comes back in a special session. I do want to ask you about HB 3979, the so-called CRT bill. It wasn't in your presentation. I'm assuming that was intentional. I've read the bill as I think it passed. Is there anything positive that you can say about the bill? Because in looking at it, I do think it's sort of a mixed bag, and I just wanted to see if you could comment on that. Are there silver linings there?
No, I'd be happy to. The critical race theory bill is one that, as it was filed, seemed to be, we saw it as a very negative bill for school districts, and we saw it as one that was structured rather poorly because of what it was asking the state board to do, when they were asked to do it, when school districts were going to be asked to respond to it. As the bill got to the House, there were a number of things done to it to the extent that the people who had concerns about that bill could do it to create some sort of balance with that bill. And it got to the Senate, and of course, the Senate pulled all of those things out. They sent it back to the House, but it was clear that it would not pass without some of those things in it, and it has. We don't know this with 100% certainty, but the interest that was expressed by the governor yesterday, including critical race theory in a special session, because we have not done enough to outlaw this, means that we'll be revisiting this, and whether it means some of those things that created perhaps a better balance from one perspective will be taken out. It's hard to say. But we're not done with critical race theory in Texas. And I know there's a significant concern about this, particularly in some of our urban school districts around the state, and as to how they will respond. Specific to that bill, though, there's a concern about teachers, two parts of it. One is that we know in our schools, particularly in our high schools, when we deal with controversial subjects, that's something that departments deal with, you deal with it, that Dr. Werz deals with this at the district level. But there's a provision in that bill that says that a teacher can opt out of addressing a controversial topic or current event if she or he is uncomfortable with that. And that flies right in the face of how our schools are structured and how we make decisions about and how we deliver instruction. That's one. The other side of that, or another aspect of that, another angle of it, is how do we protect our teachers who are generally trying to create a fair and balanced discussion on a controversial topic when it's so easy, I left my phone back there, but when it's so easy for someone to video or audio record anything that goes on in a classroom and possibly take something out of context and present that in the media or to some group that has an axe to grind, protection of the teachers becomes very, well, doesn't become, it has been very important to you and to the administration and to principals. This bill, as passed and as signed, creates some uncertainty there that I think should be of concern to everyone. And we are not done with it.
Thank you. And I agree that, especially when the effort to make it balanced, there are some things that I, in reading it, and I'm going to just read a few of them, I think are very, you know, I'm a little leery of the state getting into state legislature dictating at this level of detailed, precise documents that should be taught in curriculum. But that's the bill that we have. And they seem, some of the things that are now mandated for the state board of education to adopt as part of the TEES, some of the things sound familiar, like they probably were already there, but some of them, you know, this is a direct command that they have to be included now. Their intention with some of the other parts of the bill that, about the things that you just talked about, because some of the things that I'm about to read are things that it seems like it's going to engender the type of conversation that some people might find uncomfortable, but is historically accurate, and is now going to be instructed to be in the TEES. So, for example, the board of education shall now adopt essential knowledge and skills that develop each student's civic knowledge, including an understanding of, and this is what is now, it seems, directed that students must be taught. So, things about the fugitive slave acts of 1793 and 1850, the Indian Removal Act, things about Underground Railroad records, the Chicano movement, women's suffrage and equal rights, the civil rights movement, the history of white supremacy, including but not limited to the institution of slavery, the eugenics movement, the Ku Klux Klan, and the ways in which these things were morally wrong. It goes on, many documents from the civil rights era, the 13th, 14th, 15th amendments to the Constitution, civil rights decisions by the Supreme Court dealing directly with segregation. These are things now that are required for all students to learn, and they're necessarily, it's a mixed bag. These are things that I think some people who have concerns about this bill were worried were no longer going to be taught, are going to be taught in a watered-down fashion. But I still think there's the opportunity here to, it's not critical race theory to teach historically accurate history.
Correct.
And so, I think teachers who've approached me with concerns about this, I think I would say to them, you've been instructed to teach accurate history. And so, the things that you want to make sure don't get swept aside because of this bill, it seems to me like they still have the ability to do that. But the issues that you brought up at the end there, I think are still concerning, is what, you know, how do certain people react to it? You know, that creates some awkward questions that we'll just have to see worked out in practice. And then, I was a little bit disappointed to hear that you think that this is something that might come up on a special session agenda, and that some of the things that I just read that I think are real positives might find their way back out. But thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Thank you again, Mr. Anderson. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you both for the presentation, and congratulations on ingesting a watermelon, and good luck with that. So, I would want to, if you feel like you want to dip the toe in the pond as far as governance, local control, the out-of-wake balance related to accountability, and what's happening in the rules-making process right now, if you could touch on some of those things, I think it would be good for the board to understand where we're potentially headed, and then, so that we can certainly give Dr. Cavassos the direction to work with you and interact with that rules-making process as much as possible.
I'd go back specifically to Senate Bill 1365, which is, again, the Houston takeover bill that had no bracketing. The concern or the observation was made a number of times by state officials that this bill really is about addressing what happened in Houston and how the court ruling undermined the provisions of our accountability system to such a way that the accountability system was neutered. I would tell you that I completely disagree with that. I think the court ruling was based on the Texas Education Agency not following its own process. But it was an opportunity now to come back and say, this happened, therefore, we need to do this. And my colleague Todd Webster, several of you know Todd from his days as deputy commissioner and acting commissioner of education. At one point in this, someone said, well, with help from, specifically from David Thompson, we're improving due process. Todd's response was, no, we're not improving due process in the bill. We're adding due process to the bill, because there was no due process in the bill as it was filed and moved through the legislative session. It took, it took four or five House members basically saying, this bill is not going to get through the House unless there are some changes with accountability, which Dee Carney had a lot to do with, and input from Dr. Barlow and his counterparts in other Texas school lines, districts through Dee. A lot of those recommendations were taken. And I think Dr. Barlow and Ms. Carney would tell you, those changes mean that not only do we have a better bill than we had, we have better state law than we currently have because of that. On the due process part of it, it's the same way. If this bill really had been about Houston ISD and addressing the problem there, it would have been bracketed to Houston. So, Dr. Raj, I would say, this is an example of what I saw as state overreach with regard to accountability and due process. Because had it passed in its filed form, ruling of the commissioner would have been final. You would have had no appeal. And that's where some of my other concerns are with other pieces of legislation that put a very heavy weight on a commissioner decision with little or no opportunity for appeal in some of those areas. So, that's a dipstick indicator to me of where we are with this. The concern I have is that we need a strong Texas education agency for our schools to be effective. There's no question about that. The question really is, what's the appropriate role for the regulatory agency at the state level with regard to where it gets involved with local district decision-making? I think an offshoot question about that is, and then, what's the appropriate role for the regional service centers? The organizations that for 52 years have provided some very fine technical assistance to school districts, but they are not regulatory agencies. They provide technical assistance. This is where the lines begin to get a little blurred right now with this. When you see a state education agency developing curriculum, state board does standards, instructional decisions have traditionally been made by school districts. There's a part of our statute that says the state board may not make any rule that determines methodology other than the provision that they can tell you how much lab time your science classes have to have. But otherwise, they don't have that methodology, that authority to do that. But what we've seen now is materials and programs that I'm sure are helpful to some school districts around the state, and that's fine. But to have those materials coming out of a state education agency, the body responsible for regulating what you do, that's the concern. Because when a district then has a troublesome campus, and you're using the programs developed by the state, but the improvement doesn't occur, who's responsible for that? It's really not going to be the state. It's going to be Dr. Cavassos and the seven of you who are still bearing that responsibility. Those are the areas that I think have become very muddied in the last several years. And that's with the benefit of almost half a century of being involved in public education in Texas.
Thank you. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see where things go over the next few months. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And I think I'm going to get out on technicality because I promised my colleagues, since I had used up my allotment of questions on you in the previous two visits, I wasn't going to ask any questions, but I do want to make a comment. This has been a very difficult session for a number of reasons. Forget the winter storm Yuri and COVID. It seemed like you and your staff and your colleagues and our education-based organization, policy groups and supporters of public education were spending a lot of time playing whack-a-mole. There were a lot of zombie bills and zombie provisions, which we talked about last time, like the one that was in 1525 for performance-based funding. We got out, thanks in large part to the grassroots efforts by one of your other clients, Raise Your Hand Texas. And I want to thank everyone involved for being diligent this session and really working hard to defeat some of the more deleterious proposals and bills that were put forward. We came out pretty well, but not unscathed, I guess. That's how you would.
I think that I would characterize it that way.
Yeah, especially given some other areas of the state budget. So, or compared to our colleagues in higher ed, for instance. So, again, thank you. And I'm glad I sent a text late last night or the night before to Dr. Cavassos after reading Twitter and the retirement of another David Anderson.
Yes.
I conflated him with you, and I was like, what?
We, David and I worked together at the education agency for six years. He was general counsel, and I was curriculum director. And we confused people thoroughly then. And when he moved to Raise Your Hand, because of all the overlap with Michelle Smith, who had worked at Hillco, and now is at Raise Your Hand, we did that there. And so.
Yeah, you gave me a little, that tweet, I think it was from Michelle, gave me a little bit of a heart attack.
David will be missed by people who know him and even people who don't know him. They may not know they're going to miss him, but they will.
So, well, again, thank you for your effort, and I'm sorry I didn't wear my David Anderson burnt orange tie.
It's quite all right.
But hook 'em.
Thank you. Seeing the seven of you up there, I do want to say one last thing, and that is, I mentioned there were four or five members that were particularly important in the last 10 days. I've never seen a session in which the final 10 days made the difference they did this time. The final 10 days are always important, no question about it. Had we had the conversation on May 20th about a number of these bills, it would have been very, very different had Siney Die occurred on the 21st and on the 31st. I really do want to mention State Representative Steve Allison from Alamo Heights, State Representative Keith Bell from Forney, State Representative Brad Buckley from Colleen, State Representative Ken King from Canadian, Gary Van Dever from New Boston. Now, Gary's a retired superintendent. But the other four of those people sat in the chairs you sit in, they were all trustees. And the experience that they brought to the Texas Legislature from that seat put them in a very unique position to understand what was happening and to have a very credible voice with their colleagues. And if you watched any of it on television, I hope you didn't because it says something about your evenings. But when you saw someone step to the front mic, and those four or five people or any combination were standing behind them, it meant something. Dan Huberty, a former chair, but also a former trustee, who was busted early in the session out of his chairmanship, showed once again, though, why he is one of the most valuable members of the House. And he did that in the last 10 days because he really took these bills. And while the others were all doing a lot of the unrecognized work behind the scenes, Dan was the person who also carried a very heavy load at the front microphone. Because his standing with his colleagues and his ability to cross the rotunda to the Senate and stand up for what the House wanted is, it's almost unparalleled right now. But five former trustees and one former superintendent made a heck of a difference for public education in this session.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Just stand there for one more minute. Mr. Will Banks?
I just want to tag on to what you said. Former trustees and former educators are plenty in the legislature right now. And we'd be remiss if we wouldn't point out our own Beverly Powell, who also set up here with us as well. And I do want to put, I think we should do a shout-out to our local delegation, the valiant effort that Chris Turner, head of the Democratic Caucus, but also our own Matt Kraus, who carried the STAR bill the furthest it's ever been. It's just short of the GOAT line, but, so we had people on both sides of the aisle really stand up for public education.
Your delegation was very positive to work with this session. Every one of them was. Matt, as you said, really deserves a lot of credit for taking that issue that was important to many of his colleagues and moving it as far as he did. Senator Powell always was calling, and her staff was always calling, saying, how does Arlington ISD feel about this? We felt that you're interested. We delivered a lot of letters to your delegation. They're not on the education committee, but we wanted them to know where you were on them because some of those issues were going to get to the floor. And it made a difference. Kate mentioned one bill earlier, and that's the bill that the retired teachers were so positive about, the tutoring program. One entity retired teachers were so positive about, the tutoring program. One entity objected to that bill in the two public hearings, Arlington ISD Board of Trustees. And because of that, the people who sponsored that bill were willing to call and say, what do we need? Very simple, be more clear that this is a permissive program. And we got that language. We got that language. And around the state, there are probably 1,023 other school districts that didn't know that was happening. So, hats off to you for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson, and thank you so much, Ms. Coleman. We really appreciate the time you spent with us.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to adjust the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you so much, Ms. Benjamin. So, we continue to move on with our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And as has been customary, I've been thanking different groups during my report. And tonight, sincere thanks to the board for your recognition and validation of the work that employees have done throughout this last year and a half, and for your diligence in working on the budget, making those adjustments and inclusions tonight that will really bring joy to our staff. And so, thank you all collectively for that effort.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any trustees with reports? Okay, seeing no lights. I would like to just make a comment. We are moving into the weekend where we commemorate June 19th. And since we are in an environment of education and informing and learning, I would just like to share a little bit of the history of June 19th. President Lincoln in 1863 issued the proclamation, the Emancipation Proclamation, which was issued to free enslaved people in the Confederate areas of the United States. It so happened that June 19th of 1865, which was two and a half years after this proclamation was signed, that the news spread to what was considered at that time the Confederacy. And this news impacted over 250,000 people who remained enslaved two and a half years after technically they were stated to be free. General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to inform that slavery had been outlawed two and a half years prior. And that news was openly disregarded by the Galvestons mayor at the time, and still enslaved people were forced to physically go back and continue to work as slaves. So, this is not just about freedom of enslaved people, the celebration of Juneteenth in the South, but I think it's also about a group of people who claimed their rights as Americans. And many people today are continuing to do that exact same thing. Why do I believe that this date is important to celebrate by all people? That's because it recognizes an expression of hope and resistance, a balance of the two, and all for, who continue to seek freedom today. Not to throw my son under the bus, but he did get a history, I mean, he minored in history, and he talked about how history seemed so kind of boring when he was in school. And as he continued to learn more and more about history, what he says he really learned is being able to look back at things that have happened in the past, see how they've impacted the present, and then determine are those things we need to continue for the future to make the world a better place, or are there things that we need to recognize should probably never happen in the future. So, just take time out this weekend and do something to learn and/or celebrate Juneteenth. And that is my report. So, at this time, Ms. Secretary, do you have any items? Oh, I apologize. Dr. Raish?
I just wanted to add that it is signed as a national holiday now. So, Ms. Opal Lee, who's been at 94, five years old, marching for that for years and years, finally got her way.
Yes, she did. And she is definitely being celebrated in Fort Worth, Texas. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. Mr. Hogg wanted more information about student outcomes reporting mechanism, that we need to have it more regular so that we know how the students are doing.
Like a schedule.
Yeah, like a schedule. And then, Mr. Will Banks would like to know what all we can use the funds for the SIR II. Can we use them for tutoring? Can we use them for what? But he wanted more guidelines on what we can use that money for.
Actually, what are the minimum requirements? What are the minimum requirements for enrollment recovery versus what other uses they could be used for?
And that's it. Thank you so much, Ms. Secretary. Okay, it is now 9:51, and this meeting is adjourned.